All right, it is seven o'clock, so I'm gonna call to order this regular meeting of the Board of Education and invite you all to find us pleasantly.
Good evening. Um, we're gonna approve tonight's agenda with once, I'm gonna ask one small modification, there's, there's no spotlight or spotlight listed. On the agenda tonight under number seven, and I would like to modify this to add the gildersleeve. We've written a word as our, as our spotlight this evening, and we're excited to have. Two of our fabulous principals here to talk about that. So with that modification, is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Meg, just for a second.
Second.
Seconded by Kim. Any discussion? All in favor?
Exactly.
Motion passes. Item number four is replacement of a Board of Education member. As you all know, at our last meeting, we announced a vacancy when Angela Hammond stepped off. And the Republican Town Committee has put forward a candidate to fill the vacancy. So I think. To do this formally, I think we'll start with a motion and then we'll invite the candidate up to address some questions before we take action.
Recommend to the Board of Educate to approve Karen Renner as a replacement Board of Education member.
Thanks, Dave. Is there a second?
Out second.
Seconded by Stacy. And at this point, Karen, I would invite you to join us at the podium if you'd like to introduce yourself, and I would invite board members to ask any questions.
So hello, yes, Karen Renner. Thank you for the opportunity. I appreciate that the Republican Town Committee put me forth. And I'll take questions. I wasn't expecting that, but that's okay. Trial by fire.
Do board members have any questions for Karen? I know that we were provided with a resume, which was appreciated and helpful.
Karen, I do have a couple of questions. I thank you for coming to.
Sure.
And, you know, unfortunately, you didn't know ahead of time that you were going to be asking questions, but. You had indicated that you had done some advocacy work within the district with parents.
Yes.
Without naming names. Can you detail a little bit of that advocacy work that you've done?
Yeah, because I had, you know, of course, my daughter, which you knew. We had a hard time just getting her diagnosed and labeled, if you will. So I, I went through a lot of struggles with the district. Because we had a difference of opinion. They thought it was strictly behavioral. And I thought there was something more to it. She was tested by birth to three, et cetera. She had a lot of difficulties. So after I kind of blazed the way. Some parents took notice and they would actually contact me and say, you know, what, what do I need to know? Because there's a lot to navigate with the state, state laws. So I helped them with that and just to kind of prepare. What to expect through the process of special ed. So, and there were several families that approached me on that.
Thank you. And then just as a follow up, beyond your experience as a parent and advocate. What truly motivates you to be sitting on the board? And I know you're also a candidate in November for.
I don't know. I just have a heart for serving. Like I worked for a nonprofit. I've been working for nonprofits all my life, really. I volunteer a lot in the community, different things. Like I was just talking about the Thanksgiving food drive that I threw myself into. Just a hard to serve, basically. And I think this is a good fit for me, and I'm just interested. And I've been tied to the schools for many, many years, just as far as. Being involved with my kids and other kids. And I just, I think it's a good fit for me.
Okay. And then the last question I have is beyond, just. We are agents of the state and the federal government. And so there are times when board members are going to be asked to vote for things that. May not be in agreement with our own personal beliefs.
Right.
But it's good for kids and it's also mandated legislative.
Yeah.
Can you see yourself in a position where you can vote for something that even though a personal opinion might not be in line with what the mandate for the state is?
Oh, certainly. If it's a mandate, it's a mandate, you know?
Because there are some, you know, some, some things that are.
Absolutely.
Conflict sometimes without our own personal beliefs.
Sure, I believe that.
Thank you for being so open. Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
I have one question. As you saw in our last meeting, we're in the midst of school consolidation conversations, and I'm sort of curious to hear your stand on that. And then what would have to happen for the outcome that you're desiring?
You know, that's still a work in progress for me right now, because there's still a lot of open questions. Like Dave had brought up some stuff last, last meeting that I had not even thought about. So I said, oh, that's something to consider. So I think it's still kind of an open discussion, just internally. To be honest, but I just think whatever's fiscally best, you know, for the town, whatever works best. Because you have to think about where the kids are going to be while we're doing all the renovations. So that's a consideration. There's safety to consider. There's a lot to consider. So I need to do a little bit more homework on that. I did go to the combined meeting with the Board of Ed. Selectment. So that provided a lot of information for me, but I need to do a little more digging on that. A hundred percent like one way or the other. I did like the last plan, to be honest with you, but the town voted otherwise. So that's okay. We got to start over. And so I'll look at what, you know, what options are out there. And I'll decide when I know enough, basically. Thanks, Karen.
I have one question.
Sure.
Thank you for being here tonight. I'm wondering, you had spoken recently to the Board regarding the SEL curriculum in the schools. Could you elaborate on that and what your stance is on that?
Yeah. What concerned me about that was they actually had a graphic that showed students as the center, which is, of course, that's the whole point, right, is center. But then they had the school as the secondary layer, and then they had family as a tertiary leader. And that rubbed me the wrong way, because I don't think. Me raising my kids, I don't automatically look to the schools. Like, my kids should look to me for guidance on. A lot of things, most things, really. And the school's there, but I think they should be tertiary. That's just my personal opinion. So that's. One of the things that rubbed me the wrong way about the whole idea. Anything else?
Is there additional questions? No, thank you for answering questions. Is there a further discussion? No, I would just, I would say that this is, I need to point out that this is, this is. Very unusual timing for the Board to be asked to make an appointment to fill a vacancy with only two meetings remaining before Election Day. And additionally, it is very unusual that the Board of Ed is being asked to endorse a current candidate. To fill a vacancy. And, you know, I've been wrestling with that. Myself, I will say I have a lot of respect for the process that we follow. And because I have respect for the process that we follow, I'm, I'm not going to vote in opposition to this, but I do feel the need to abstain from this vote. So I'm just gonna be voicing that now. Is there any other comment?
Well, I think it's unfair to Karen to be put in the middle of a political season to, for two meetings. We don't, we, we onboard our new board members when they're appointed and also when they're elected. And so. A little bit of a complicated situation where, you know, you learn about budgets and policy and bylaws and how we all conduct business as a committee of the whole. And I think it's unfair to Karen to seat her for two meetings when she's going to be asked to vote on policies which are coming up. We just, you know, approved first readings of policies. And I think the learning curve is very steep, so I have to vote no. And I would welcome her as a, as an elected member of the Board of Education in November, should she win the election. But I can't in good faith sit her on a board tonight. As the replacement, I think would be unfair to Karen. I think it's unfair to the process.
I would disagree with that. We took a different stance when we talked as a group beforehand. Karen ran two years ago and just narrowly didn't make it. So her enthusiasm is there to wanting to be part of this process. She's also on the, on the docket for November. And enthusiasm in us, we saw that she wants to get in and get her feet wet. And yeah, there's a risk that she doesn't win in November. And, and it's a two, three meetings of her time, but she's willing to do that. And she was willing to do that. We were willing to support her. So.
Thanks, Dave.
I think the one other comment I will make is that we were without representation from Angela, and I know that was out of, you know, completely out of her control. But that, you know, that took a long, that was a long period of time without her presence on the board. So I would just, you know, without the formal presentations.
Yeah, I think following on that, I would add, we do have only two more meetings until the election. So in light of that. I am going to abstain from the vote. I look forward to working with whomever is seated on the Board of Education because they're representing the public. It's just the optics of seating, of asking us all to endorse a candidate who is also currently running. And that is where I feel like I need to abstain on this.
Share that view. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor? Dave and Stacy are in favor. Any opposed? Meg is opposed and any extensions? Let's have the three of us. So the eyes win. Karen is appointed to fill the vacancy on the Board of Ed, and we are very fortunate to have Mr. Tierney here this evening to swear her in. So I think we'll pause our meeting briefly and allow that to proceed.
Raise your right hand. You solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Connecticut. So long you continue as a citizen thereof, and that you will faithfully discharge according to law the duties of office of the Board of Education to the best of your abilities to help you God.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you for being here. We appreciate it. And Karen, please come have a seat. You can join us for the remainder of the meeting.
That's just her name, Meg.
Congratulations, Karen.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we are going to keep it moving. The next item is approval of the consent agenda, which includes approval of the September 2nd, 2025 Board of Education meeting minutes. As well as approval of an out of state field trip for the Portland High School cross country team to Thetford, Vermont in October. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Meg. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Kim. Discussion on either of those items? All in favor? Aye. Any extensions? Any opposed? Motion passes. Audience of citizens, we have anyone with us in person or online who wishes to address the Board at this point? All right, there'll be another opportunity at the end of the meeting. I'm excited to get to our Portland Public Schools Spotlight, which is the next item, and we are so lucky. To have our, our current Gilder sleeve and Valleyview principal here, former, former Gilder sleeve principal. And Dr. Britton, I'll let you.
Yeah, thank Tracy so much. And Ryan, we gotta embarrass you a little bit.
Or a lot of it.
Come on up to the podium. We, I definitely want to get you on camera, so please come up to the podium. So.
I have to try business, but the Dr. Britton told me that he was going to talk about this during his superintendent's report, and I said, wait, what? This is like, this is probably the most exciting Portland Public Schools Spotlight we've had.
Yeah, and I'll let you guys reflect. I just want to embarrass you. So. What, what? There is a case study in, in excellence, but a, a case study in leadership excellence out of, out of Gillars, right? And certainly it, it started with Ryan, extended to his partnership with Tracy, and continued to Tracy. So I gotta walk us back through time a little bit, just to put a frame around this. If you remember, it was the, the year before the pandemic, right? I think it was my second year here, when we learned that Gilder sleeve was a focus, right? And it was a focus school, not because of overall math performance, but it was a focus, became a focus school because of the discrepancy between some of our high need students' performance in math. And our general education students' performance in math. But, you know, it was a little bit jarring for us. It's something I know that I took very seriously. I know Philip O'Reilly took very seriously, and I know Ryan took very seriously. But what we did after that, what is where the case study begins, right? It was reach out to the State of Connecticut, partner with the Connecticut State Department of Education. And develop a plan around mathematics to improve student performance. If you remember, that was the beginnings of what was, we were calling the CIG grant for several years. But it was more than just the funding, although that was helpful. It was the planning and execution that went into that. The hard work that Ryan put into writing that grant with Eric, I have to give shout out there. And being very thoughtful about how those funds would be used to support professional development. Resources in, in the classroom and of course curriculum, right? And then, of course, we were ready by the end of the next year, but you know what happened the next year? On March, we were shut down and that testing was put on hold. So not only did we have to navigate the challenges of being a focus school, but we had to do it during a pandemic. Right? Like, I want to put that in perspective. It wasn't just what we did to address those needs. It was the overall conditions going into and then coming out of a pandemic that this happened. So not only to move from focus school status to blue ribbon status, but to do that during a global pandemic. I mean, it's, it's remarkable beyond, beyond words. And, and, you know, I'm a little closer. I watched it happen. I was feeling pretty good. I was really part of it. But I gotta say, I just watched these guys do their work. And sometimes what good superintendents know is how to get out of people's land, right? Like, good leadership isn't just about leading, it's knowing when to move and, and let the people who know what they're doing, do what they're doing, right? And, and that's exactly, I just gotta be honest, that's exactly what I did with, with Ryan and Tracy and everybody at Gilder sleeve. Did my best to support, cheerlead and stay out of the way, because what I was watching them do was outstanding. So. Blue ribbon is their blue ribbon. And, and congratulations, you deserve it. I'm just sorry that it changed here, right? That you're not going down to Washington to be recognized and meet the Secretary of Education and do all that. That's a real bummer. I guess I knew that once, it was really cool. But in my mind, you're still a blue ribbon school, even now, officially a Connecticut blue ribbon school. And, and, you know, kudos, well done, and congratulations. Really proud of you.
Come back up. Don't go away. If you'd like to say anything, if you want to share anything.
So as you're talking, the first thing I will say, and you know, part of this is. It's just neat to see how things play out. But it truly was, first and foremost, it was the Gilder sleeve staff. Because in, you know, largely in the same way that you're saying that, you know, you allowed us as a leadership team in the school, you know, to, to do our thing. You know, we sort of set parameters, but, you know, there were, and, and I can't even name one key player. It was the staff as a whole that stepped up. It was a real punch to the gut when we found out that. We, we know, we knew Gilder sleeve was great, but then all of a sudden we're labeled as a focus school, and that hurts. But, you know, there was a moment, I mean, that staff, first staff meeting, when, you know, I had to stand up there and, and tell the staff that. You know, this was our status and, and this is the work that we had to do, you know, that it was one of the worst things I ever had to do. But that didn't last a lot. They rolled up their sleeves and, you know, we were very fortunate to get the CIG grant and to, to. You know, day by day and year by year, even through the pandemic, you know, chip away at, at making progress. And the great thing about that is, you know, talk about gaining momentum. You know, when, when they gained that momentum, we weren't just going to stop, you know, getting off the focus school list, but we just kept going. Which is how we landed as the, the level one school of distinction. And, you know, fortunately, you know, being recognized with the blue ribbon. But I have to say, my partner here, I, you know, we, we joke about this, and I, I love that, you know, I can, can call Tracy a colleague, but Tracy's also a great friend of mine. And we had this great opportunity with the money in the CIG grant to hire additional interventionists. And I use that term really loosely, because as you know, we had to move the Gilder sleeve nurse out of the nurse's office to a larger room. And Tracy's intervention room became the room, the nurse's office right across from my office. And essentially Tracy and I did it together. Tracy really was the underpaid assistant principal of Gilder sleeve. And it was, you know, we, we joke that a lot of times, you know, I would come in with seventeen ideas about what we need to do. And just sort of be out in the clouds, and Tracy would be the person who would sort of reel it in and say, the, this is probably what we need to do first. If you do those seventeen things, the staff is going to completely turn on you. But it really was, you know, it really truly was that leadership team and that partnership. That got us, you know, to the point that we did in terms of becoming the school, you know, the, the. School distinction and so forth. And it, nothing thrills me more than to have Tracy now in the principal's seat at Gilder sleeve. Tearing on the baton, because she knows that hard work that we had to do. She knows, you know, the, the great, you know, success stories and, and the, you know. Those moments that were things were working, but also those moments where things weren't working. And I think having a principal in that role, having that background knowledge and having had that experience is just the absolute best thing for our students. For our Portland staff and for, for Gilder sleeve. So, you know, that really is why, you know, it happened the way it did. So. Appreciate it.
Yeah, I, yeah, I, and, and, you know, I always tease Ryan too, but like he, the way he kind of sees things and his understanding of curriculum is, is really impressive. And sometimes it is like so out there that I would have to be like, okay, Ryan, we can, you know, tell the staff that, yeah, you go into the team meeting and tell them. But really, if he didn't have those like big ideas and that, to get us started, you know, even taking us to the PLC conference. I just don't think we would ever have gotten there in the way that we were able to have our staff buy into it and really understand it and see. You know, he left me in such, in such great shape to take over, because the staff just really does, like Charles said too. They, they do the hard work day in and day out. So I know we're both so proud and I so appreciate. You know, Brian starting this whole charge and we're just so proud of the staff.
That's amazing. Yeah. Do, do board members have any questions before they, before they leave? Any questions?
Yeah, I just wanted to find out what I think. I did a little research. I, I couldn't find any other town in the State of Connecticut, not with one, not with two. But with three blue ribbons, right? So, you know, there, there is something remarkable happening here. And two of them I wasn't here for, I know that we're very proud. And actually, that's the first time I met Scott. I was getting my blue ribbon to the school. Until in Washington DC, we're at the same table. But that, that really is something that, that I think that Portland should be very proud. And I don't think there's another town in the state that has that level of riches.
Yeah, pretty incredible. Well, I just, I just think this is such an incredible reflection, not only on the two of you and your, and your really incredible leadership. And teamwork and collaboration, but as you mentioned, on our phenomenal staff and on the partnerships that they build with families. And our incredible kiddos, it's just, it's so well deserved. You all are amazing. Any other thoughts, questions?
No, just congratulations and thanks for the hard work and, and the team of teachers and, and staff members behind and supporting. Really proud of all of you.
And I'm really looking forward to getting some kind of celebration on the books so that we can invite the community to celebrate with, with us.
We have a luncheon coming up with this day, where, where that's going to be part two.
Great.
So.
Great. All right, we're going to move on to our student representative report, and we are very fortunate to have a new student representative joining us this year. So I'm, I'm thrilled that, and if Yassik is joining us, and, and I'm going to let you go ahead and introduce yourself, and then the two of you can take it away.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. I'm Anna Piusik. I'm a junior. I'm very excited to be here.
Welcome to new board members.
Yeah, so absolutely incredible that we got not one, two, but three blue ribbons. Incredible. Anyway, into the report. Our fall sports are on full swing with a promising start to the season. As a, as a whole, it looks like we've got a great season ahead of us. And as some of you may have heard. Girls JV volleyball, just run their game.
Thanks. Congratulations.
In other news, you may have heard, our new athletic director is pushing for a slogan and motto for our school. This project of his is filled with student suggestions and voting open to the student body this week. As you previously proved, our cross-country team will be traveling to Pepper, Vermont to compete in a, their annual meet up there. And lastly, in sports news, next week, we will be running many alumni games and events, but more on that later. In music news, tomorrow, our marching band is traveling up to the Big E to perform in March on Connecticut Day. And this Saturday, our band is also going to be performing at Yukon Band Day up at Rensselaer Field. Hope to see you all there. And lastly, in music news, if you've not ordered, I have five forms. I have more than enough to go around. And now over to our new board rep, Anna.
Thank you, Liam. Our PHS open house is open September twenty-fifth and will be open to current students and parents. Um, currently, DECA is running their annual mom sale fundraiser. They'll be selling moms at the open house and you can order them ahead of time on GoFans and there's also order forms in the office. Homecoming week is next week. The homecoming semi-formal dinner dance is hosted by the student senate and is scheduled for September twenty-seventh. Theme is autumn nights and the senate members and some other volunteers from the student body have been working to transform the PHS cafeteria into a fall landscape. Due to the success of last year's homecoming, we are expanding the celebration to include alumni games. Um, we're hoping all alumni players and coaches will attend the nights with their families to watch our current teams play. All alumni players and coaches are asked to complete the form on the alumni flyer, which can be found on the school website. The games that will be held are girls volleyball on Wednesday, September twenty-fourth. There is a soccer doubleheader on Friday, September twenty-sixth, with the boys' game at five o'clock and the girls' game at seven o'clock. Alumni players and coaches will be recognized and called out between the games. And alumni players from graduation years in the nineteen seventies have already completed the form and are attending the games. And we are hoping for a large student section for the sport. I'd like to give a little shout out to our new athletic director, Mr. Moreno. I've been at most of the home games, taking pictures for the teams and every time I'm there, he's making a point to say hi to me and just, I can tell that he's making connections with the student body and I think that's very good.
Thanks for sharing that, Anna. That's really great to hear. Can I ask you, Liam, um, or either of you, if you remember any of the, you started voting opened on the, on the new slogan ideas? Do you remember what any of them are? I'm curious.
Not off the top of my head, but I think I filled it out either yesterday or.
Yeah.
So.
Did you feel like they're, like they were?
A bit foggy.
Okay, so you feel like you had some good options to choose from?
This will be the first round of voting, so it'll, it'll become a little bit more clear what student body is looking at.
All right.
Later on, but hopefully in October, we will have a new slogan and motto for you.
That's really neat and it sounds like a cool process. Other questions for Liam or Anna?
How's, how's the way you're going so far for you?
Good.
Thank you.
Rather busy.
I like to say that, good.
You can imagine. Um, well. Um, Anna, welcome. We're really glad you're joining us this year. Um, and, uh, just, you know, to, to you and to, Leah Marty knows this as well. We're, we're thrilled, we're thrilled you're both here. We love your updates. You are welcome to participate in any other conversation that you are interested in engaging and we love hearing from the two of you. Um, and we'll come back to you again for sure during, I try not to forget during our board, board member comments, just if you have any final thoughts to share with us, but feel free to ask questions and participate throughout the meeting as much as you're comfortable. All right? All right. Um, anything else, any other questions?
I have a quick one.
Sure.
Did they announce the musical yet?
They haven't, September twenty-fifth, we're all waiting.
Yeah, this will be my first time in nine years that I'm not doing costumes.
Hopefully we can have an answer for you in October.
Okay. Well, as of September twenty-ninth here, there's going to be an answer. It's like a calendar event and kids are very, very excited. We're all waiting. Um, all right, excellent. We're going to move on to communications and updates. Dr. Britton?
All right, several, several things. First, I included in your folder tonight, I, I, I just put it in there, if you haven't seen. All of our, um, non-certified employees are going to receive a letter from me with their, um, pay stub at the next payday. Right? Um, informing them or reminding them, if they haven't been tuned in, to a new law that they're subject to called the Connecticut Paid Sick Leave Law. Right? The first piece of news to drop on them is that there's a new tax that they'll see on their paycheck. So, point five percent of their pay is going to be withheld and we, we do this through ADP and remitted to the state of Connecticut, Connecticut Paid Sick Leave Program Fund, right? There are two benefits that are now accessible through this law to all of our non, non-certified employees. The first is paid leave. So it's a little bit confusing. You have to think about this in, on two tracks. First track is if you need to take a leave, you will have job protected leave through federal FMLA. The federal FMLA is unpaid, right?
Right.
In addition to that now, folks will be able to be paid through Connecticut Paid Leave. So it's really a two-track. Connecticut Paid Leave doesn't offer job protection. Federal FMLA does, but Connecticut FMLA offers pay for that job protected status that is enjoying as a federal. So I do my best to explain that in the letter, otherwise I provide a lot of information about folks. And of course, the reminder here is that if you ever need to take a leave, you talk to Jen Goji and us and we help you fill out paperwork and get going down. So this is new, but as of October first, to pay for that paid leave, there's a new tax, new, a new, um, withholding that is going to show up. And this only affects non-certified, it doesn't affect teachers or administrators that are part of, I don't know, collective bargaining unit. So that's the first part of this. The second is, and this does affect our contracts, right? So as you know, we have in all of our contracts with all of our bargaining units, custodians, nurses, paraprofessionals, administrative assistants, and non-classified folks like, um, Tricia and, um, Stephanie and others. People are, are provided sick leave. You know, a certain number of days is different by contract, both in terms of the hours and in terms of the number of fees and how much you can accumulate in a sick bag. The first forty hours, there's new, under this paid leave, we'd otherwise have to do MOUs or change our contracts. Otherwise, we're just going to follow the law, right? So the, the first forty hours of that time, and all of our folks get more than forty hours, well more than forty hours, but the first forty hours of it, there's a new definition for how that time can be taken. In our contracts, this is a little different, you have to look by bargaining, but that first forty hours can be used for illness, injury, or health condition, diagnosis, care, treatment of a physical or mental health condition, or for preventative care, care for a family member for those two reasons, or mental health wellness days. Okay, so that mental health wellness days is new, right? So in some of our contracts, that expands the definition, at least for those first forty hours. And the increments that that time can be taken is also changing. So in some of our contracts, we say you have to take that time in half or full days. The first forty hours now can be taken in one hour increments. So the first forty hours for all of our bargaining units that are, are classified, non-certified positions, it is subject to Connecticut Paid Sick Leave Law, can be taken in one hour increments for those reasons, including the mental health days. On the forty-first hour, it reverts back to the contract.
So is that an additional forty hours and then, you know, it overlaps with the?
Right.
Okay.
So if you get seventy-two hours of paid time per your contract, the first forty hours of it are, are defined as that.
That can be taken incrementally in one hour.
Right, hour forty-one to seventy-two reflects what your contract.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
I think so.
But our contracts are they, you're given a number of days, not hours, is that correct or has that changed?
No, it's days, but I just do the math.
You, right.
If you're a, if you work a six-hour day, I would get seven days, seventy-two hours. If it's an eight-hour day for custodian and you're like fifteen days.
Right. Will we have to convert the days to hours going forward in the contracts, MOU or something?
No, we'll just do that, thank goodness. Stephanie and Jen, who are so on top of it, seeing this coming, got us into what's called Red Rover.
Okay.
And not our old, but part of the reason we needed to jump out of our old clunky paper-based time card system was that we needed to be able to track this.
Track it.
Stephanie and Jen worked very hard to get us into a system, it's called Red Rover, that we're no longer signing paper time cards. And then we're recording with an app on Bones and it's actually something that looks like usually twenty-twenty-five and not.
So it won't present too many challenges for Jen to be tracking these hours versus?
Well, let's say this.
Half-days.
It's, it's a lot for Jen.
Yeah.
She, because we're learning this, like the one-hour increments and then coverage is a challenge and, and we're, we're learning this. This is going to be a, a new learning curve for all of us, um, but we're, it's the law, we will, we will figure it.
Okay, so this is a payroll service that is electronic.
Correct.
All right.
So that letter, I included it for you so you could see it along with all of the supportive documents.
Has that letter already gone out?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay. I'm just curious how much, how much, not, I don't want to say chaos, but I'm wondering how much confusion and how much, um, kind of, you know, you know, how many questions there are going to be that Jen, Jen and Stephanie and Andrew, you will be needing to field in order to help folks understand what this means for them.
I'll let you know. So the, the letter here, it's included in your packet, it's going to, with the pay stub, we're literally stapling it to the pay stubs for everybody because everybody checks their email diligently. This is really important. People are going to see more, less money in their paycheck.
Yeah.
Right, so we're attaching this there and the last line says, if you have questions, reach out to me or Jen Goji, I'll let you know.
Okay.
So my next question is, the town obviously has to do this as well for?
I don't think so.
I mean, it's really.
I think that it's just for the board.
Just for, okay, because I was wondering if the town was going to also use an electronic payroll system at some point, whether it's Red Rover or ADP or A-Dash.
To be clear, it's not just boards of ed dealing with this, this is a broad law impacting employee across the state. It's just that certain groups of employees are exempt from this, including, I think, municipal employees who are potentially who are, who are, um, in municipality.
Yeah, and there was lots of lobbying last year to exempt boards of ed too, but that was not successful. We are part of this now. So we're prepared, we're ready, we're doing it.
Right, because we've been doing it for.
Yeah, it's, it started last January, but the people are going to see the tax, October one.
October one.
So while they had the benefit as of last January, and it was really hard at the end of last year for us to manage some of this, but we figured it out. Red Rover has been a huge help in getting us there. But we need to let people know because this is where, you know, if you have a, a thousand dollar paycheck, five dollars is coming out. It's a new, new tax.
Charles, our HR department informed us this year that there was a change in the legislation and that how it's written in the contract for that hour time is usurps the one hour. So this year we're not doing one hours, it's how our contract language for a half-day, full-day.
Uh, I don't, I don't, I'd have to check with them or it's not anymore. I don't, I don't know.
Recent legislation amendment from the hourly increments to the minimum increment prescribed in the collective bargaining agreement, which for me is half or four.
Let me check.
Yeah. So that's different for certified by that.
I understand it's the first forty hours can be taken in one hour, that's what's in the law. I don't know that your contract trumps that.
Yeah.
But that's worth a double check.
Yeah, it is worth a double check.
All right, so I'll keep you posted on how that goes. Um, couple of others, one other big one, right? So this is interest. As you know, last legislative session, it was like drinking water from a fire hose to try to stay up with all of the things that were being proposed. If you remember last year, we wrote letters to our legislative, I know some of you testified, you know, that whole process that they use to make the sausage is, is really hard to keep track of. And the, the texts are, you're reading legislation, it's like, what does this mean? You know, it's, it's a lot, but thank goodness we have a couple of questions, right? I have, we have shipment and Goodwin and my superintendent's associations and Sarah has her ropes and we all go now in the summer and the fall to learn what actually passed and what this means for us, right? Then we have CAVE, who's takes all of those changes, repackages them in policy and hands them to us.
With all the mandated language that we're needing to include.
And we spend a lot of time going to webinars to learn more. So it's amazing how fast this happens. Last Friday, I went to the legislative update. I also got the CAVE policy update and today I was in a webinar, right? So earlier tonight, policy met and reviewed the CAVE updates. You're going to see a lot of policies on for a first read that reflect changes to special education and library and challenging controversial materials and all of those things are coming to me. I then went to the legislative update and sat in a webinar today that I wanted to talk to you about because this is really interesting opportunities for us. The webinar I sat in today, and Ryan and Sarah tuned in, was with the Office of Early Childhood, with Beth By, who's retiring and her soon-to-be replacement, right? And it talked about this enormous amount of money that is being put in a trust fund and can you notice, that as of twenty-twenty-seven is going to be available to help people pay for pre-K on daycare, right? So the way it works, and I learned about this today, is as of twenty-twenty-seven, if you're a family making less than a hundred thousand dollars a year, you can access this fund to pay one hundred percent of your early childhood care pre-K costs, right? The state is encouraging us, and Ryan and Sarah will, if they check their email next, know that I'm scheduling a meeting with the Office of Early Childhood and them to get our minds wrapped around this, is encouraging towns to open more seats in pre-K, right? I learned today, this surprised me a little bit, I thought it was more, but half of our pre-K students are in seats in public schools, the other half are in the private schools, mom and pop shop or local or other.
You mean, you're talking about in terms of Connecticut?
In terms of Connecticut.
Pre-schoolers and dads.
You're talking about four-year-olds, three and four-year-olds or just four-year-olds?
I'm talking about pre-K.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm talking about for pre-Brian.
Three and four.
Yep, so I would like us to do an assessment and have a conversation about charging tuition and opening more pre-K seats in Portland. Now, one of the big things that you're going to, because if we can do that, set a tuition and say to our community, if you make less than a hundred thousand dollars, the state will pay for your seat and then it's a scale after a hundred thousand dollars that the state would be subsidizing part of that tuition, right? It would, yes, open another revenue stream for Portland. But hey, more importantly than that, wouldn't it be awesome to say to Portland moms and dads, come let us in a full day, pre-K, educate your children, right? Like that's, there's both the educational side of it and there's the financial side of it that makes sense. Everybody with me so far? I don't have a proposal for you tonight, but I'm deepening my understanding of it. I'm good at engaging Sarah and Ryan in this discussion. Right away, your next question's going to be, do we have the classrooms for this?
And?
Well, isn't it interesting, especially as we heard tonight Karen saying, he's like, I have a lot more questions I need to know a lot more. So do I, right? This, this could be part of our conversation about if a, a pre-K to value your?
Extra space at Gildersleep.
Creating additional classrooms to open these seats, access that revenue stream. Now, second part, I'll read it to you. I shared this with Laurel tonight, it's like, my mind was blown. In my legal update, thi- this was shared with us, and I, and I'll just read it to you and then I'll explain what I believe it means. This is really potentially exciting. So under current law, the state provides fifteen percent point, percentage reimbursement rate increase for new or expanded elementary school construction projects that include space for early childhood care and education programs that provide services for children birth to age five. Under the prior law, this increase applied only to those portions of the building used primarily for such programs. Right, so when we were at the mega school, right, we were saying we would get our fifty percent or fifty-one percent for the K through five classrooms and then the fifty percent plus the additional, we thought five, for the two classrooms of pre-K, right? Now that's just that square footage. That's now been increased to fifteen percent, we thought it was five, fifteen percent. And let me read the next sentence, as you're all sitting down. Section one forty-two and one forty-three of Public Act twenty-five, one seventy-four, apply the fifteen percentage point reimbursement bonus to the cost of the entire school. So if we're in a position now where based on the work of the facility study committee, we were at sixty percent with open choice and our new construction reimbursement rate, add fifteen percent, we're at potential for seventy-five percent reimbursement. Let's put that in perspective, right? And I'll keep going. The act also establishes a new fifteen- The act also establishes a new fifteen percentage point reimbursement rate bonus for new buildings or renovation expansion of existing buildings, which buildings are used to provide special education, a general education for non-special education students. If they include plans for the expansion or creation of in district special education programming and services, the bonus reimbursement rate applies only to those portions of the project used primarily for those special education programs. So it could mean that for the whole project, we're getting seventy-five percent and fifteen plus seventy-five is ninety percent reimbursement. If I go to Sarah and we're building portions of the building for ADA, RISE, T O T expansion, special education. So this could make this project eminently affordable, right? If we're at seventy-five percent and creating a revenue stream by expanding pre-K seats, kids.
Yep.
I, I, that was a
Incredible opportunity.
It's a pretty like
Yeah.
Whoa, so it was a really good weekend.
And at the last meeting, I said that extra space at Gilder sleeve, rather than tearing that part of the building off because it's over square footage, if we could find a way to and there's the way to keep that extra footage.
So, so it's it's potentially real and I'm just, like I said, literally, this is like
This is awesome.
Just trying to digesting it, but that brings me to, I do have a quote for another demographic study, I'm not ready to share it with you, I'm getting two, right? And I asked, I was hoping to have it tonight, I've asked Mike Serrano for a, a contract extension. We gotta get going, like, we need, we need to develop this plan with this new information. But again, if this is all true, and I'm kinda reading this like, what's, where's the catch? Right, where's the, where's the fine print in in this, right? But um, this could potentially in terms of making this affordable, make it something that you almost can't afford not to do. I mean, literally, opening a revenue stream, expanding pre-K seeds, seventy-five percent reimbursement and overhead savings?
The only fuck is gonna be that every district reading this that is doing school consultant, so we need to strike while we can.
Well, Laurel and I were kind of riffing and we were saying, you know, this is gonna make a lot more pre-K sex schools.
Of course, well, it makes sense. And with the declining enrollment, you have to, you have to look for four year olds, you do.
So there's, there's a lot, lot to unpack here, all around, it's, it's exciting and, I mean, good karma is for us because it's happening at the exact moment that we need it to.
Yeah, and it's just like, it's so exciting, we've been talking about, we've been talking about affordable preschool for so long and to now have what looks like a very real opportunity to be able to provide accessible pre-K to more kids in our community. What an amazing opportunity for us.
Yeah, so Ryan, Sarah and I have our work cut out for us, I'm scheduling those meetings. Concurrent with deepening our understanding and doing this needs assessment that they recommended today figuring out the policy and the plans and the tuitions and what's reasonable and how we do it, we'll also be working hopefully you know, develop a plan aligned to the um, recent committee recommendations.
I know Hebron does a tuition based um, pre-K up in Hebron and that's been going on for several years, so there are districts that do that and open it up to not just the kids coming out of earth at three, but also the rest of the community.
Yeah.
Good, that's all, and so.
All have it, thank you.
I just said, this is absolutely incredible opportunity and if we can strike while the iron's hot on this, we'll be in a great spot.
Yeah, I think you're right, Liam. So I've been living this for ten years and I have a lot of insight that I can offer and some cautions.
Yeah.
Um, I think the big thing to remember is that the way a pre-K is set up in a public school right now, you have a dual certified teacher doing two jobs.
Two.
That job is incredibly, incredibly burdened some in of itself, trying to run the gen ed classroom component of it and then also meet the needs of those IEP children. Are there ways to do this mindfully and thoughtfully? And well, yes, so I think making sure that you're not trying to fit a square peg in a round hole and making sure that we can still be individualized in our approach with those children with special needs and not say, okay, we're all going to be this model of preschool. That there's still gotta be some flexibility for the needs of the students and how to make it work for everyone without absolutely making those preschool teachers that are already doing two jobs, I'll say it again. When, you know, not twice the prep time and writing IEPs and holding PBTs and um, that is a lot. Um, and like they say that quote, nothing's free, so um, you know, having to do that tuition base, all of it, that is living that every day, so I have lots of insight I can offer and I'd love to meet with you guys and give my cautions and my suggestions of if I were to do it again, you know, I would do it and hopefully Portland can do it.
To me, that, that's great and it's a perfect time, right? So I, I literally, the, the way I look at, learned about this this morning, I'm with Sarah and Ryan, they, their email is probably about five hours old and I asked Tricia to set up a time for us to meet with the Office for Early Childhood. I think out of that, it's time for us to get a, a working group together, you wanna be a fan, help us formulate a plan that begins with all of those certification requirements, the who, but also right now, it we need, we need very clearly, we need to talk about the where, the space to do that. Where, right now, we don't have it, I mean, it's, it's not here.
No, it's not.
But isn't it interesting that we're having this conversation at the exact time that we're talking about a pre-K two Valley View, whatever we could, that, that space. So the world's aligned nicely.
Yeah.
I think that'd be great.
Great, any other questions for or comments for Charles?
The only thing that gets me nervous is I love the percentage for the construction, but because we know the state has a changes their mind frequently, so when you say this twenty twenty-seven,
Right.
Are they gonna pay a hundred percent? Are they gonna pay seventy percent? Are they gonna pay fifty percent? Is it gonna change? And we're gonna be stuck in program, but now we have to
Take us a lot.
Support, right?
Right.
The only thing would be is, is the, the board's policy would be, we charge a tuition. The, the X factor would be who pays the tuition, right? What I hear with this trust is the state's committing by twenty twenty-seven, it's a large chunk of money and they, they reference, by the way, the, the state that Connecticut is modeling is New Mexico. I think New Mexico is leaving the, I think I heard ten billion dollars into this trust fund that can be accessed by families and, and I think that what I heard today was this was like Connecticut's down initial
Was it down?
Investment of it. If that trust fund went away or didn't happen, we would then be expecting families to pay the tuition for it. The only question then would be would people not, not because they couldn't afford to, you know? But yes, a lot, a lot, a lot could happen.
Yeah, Mexico has already enacted it and I think the kids are already coming into the school system, you know, parents are getting, you know, free free, free schooling.
I'll keep you posted.
Yeah, please do. Alright. Um, is Stephanie with us?
No.
Online tonight?
Stephanie had a family challenge.
Okay.
So um,
Just checking.
Very, very sorry, but I am, I am excited to share her report.
Great.
Get to her questions. So what she gave you tonight was last year's authorized expenditure report, right, done, closed out.
Yeah.
Right, and her report that tells you what she's been telling you all year, which is that was a great year last year, unlike the year before last, where we ended in the deficit and that was very difficult, we obviously ended in the surplus this year. So her memo to you outlines where that surplus came from. And, and help, again, a lot of it had to do with, um, we didn't fill our exposition, we hired people lower on the salaries because fewer people took health benefit packages.
There's a lot of caution last year coming out of the previous year and I think that that, that you see that in this document for sure.
A lot of question, yeah, that was a, it was a little trauma from that year before, that was very hard. So um, we did end the surplus totaling two hundred and five thousand, I think what's, also I'd like to go through with you is what we got with that. These are very, these were excellent investments and I'm much better last year to figure out where to spend it than otherwise be in the deficit position, right? So we did purchase, just so you're aware, the twenty Chromebooks for faculty. And that was great because as you remember in, in the budget, we only budgeted for students to the number that we were predicting in fifth and ninth grade, right? So fifth and ninth graders all got new Chromebooks under a four-year warranty, we didn't purchase any Chromebooks for faculty. Um, but so this enabled us to purchase twenty faculty Chromebooks so that new teachers can get a Chromebook and we could replace some of the paperweights that teachers read. The forty-six desktop computers was huge because as you know, we were hoping to get the Perpetua grant, but we didn't get all of it. We needed to get these to replace the desktop units that were out of date because the Microsoft licenses wasn't, were no longer supporting that and they were then a security risk. So now we have all desktops that are up to date and, and running appropriate software that has all the security. The fifty thousand dollars worth of supplies, awesome, because don't forget the year before, we froze all the way in December and used everything, the, the closet warranty around, we didn't have to freeze last year, but you know, we were still paying catch-up from the year before so that we were able to purchase some supplies and, and um, that was very helpful. Toby Hind leaf fact and um, a mower for grounds crew. These were things that, that Bob needed and otherwise great that we were able to get those, replace the PHS gym doors. Replace the projector and the screen in the auditorium, were not working, it's great to have those back and
Yeah.
installed and, and nice. Our Meraki licenses, if you remember last year, the internet went off, as the license expired and it's not a great day, but we had to pay to get that license renewed and we're able to do so because we had that end of year funding. And then we did get the ten thousand from the Peg Peach grant and were able to get some additional funds to upgrade some additional desktops. Uh, and then of course the Tiffany drums that we use the Ryan brought for, so we, we were notifying you of all of these things. But this is just Stephanie reporting out to you that, um, and then with the two hundred and five thousand dollars surplus, and these are the things that we're looking at.
That's in addition to the hundred and fifty thousand that was transferred into our maintenance fund eleven.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, correct. So it was, it was a, it was a good way to end the year compared to the year.
Yes. The only, there was only one thing that I wanted to flag just for the board and I'd already touched the face of Charles about this and he's reached out to uh, to CSS, our, to CSS, CSS, our subs. ESS, sorry, too many, too many acronyms in my head, to ESS, our subs, that we did, we're showing a deficit in the object having to do with um, our substitute line last year as a reminder because our minimum wage increased mid-year. So just as a flag, minimum wage is going up again January one and so we've, we've been in touch with ESS because that will have an impact on our sub, our substitute, some of our substitute daily rates in the middle of this current fiscal year as well, so as a heads up, we, we very likely will see another deficit in the substitute line again because of that.
Right, and of course, I'll just mention from a fiscal perspective, the fill rate was better.
That's good.
Which is, uh, which is good for our principals and our schools, but when you have a lower fill rate, you're not spending money on it, it just creates some complication, so you want a high fill rate, but it's, it's expensive when you have a high fill rate, so
Yeah.
The combination of a higher fill rate, because coming out of a pandemic, you know, we were really struggling with subs. And then the minimum wage, we're, I think we're gonna have that experience again with the minimum wage going up again and continuing to be high.
Which is all in all a positive, yeah. Well, as always, Stephanie's report is so thorough and I really appreciate the way she highlights things for us to pay attention to. Um, have other questions about anything in her report or in the authorized spending report?
No, but I would just comment that um, with the purchase of a third venue, we should see another savings in the transportation. Um, and that contract was due this year, correct?
We're negotiating tomorrow?
Yeah, oh, okay.
Yeah.
Alright. And I did, um, I could sign up to go to the electric bus thing down in New Haven, it's a webinar, but it's online. But I will go and get information and I appreciated your quick response about John and the fact that they're not looking to do anything with their buses.
Actually, interesting email about that today too that I shared.
Thank you.
Thanks for doing that, Meg.
Yeah, no problem. They keep sending me these things. Charles, so it's good to have information, yeah.
Alright, any other questions about, about Stephanie's report or questions for us to send back to Stephanie for next time?
No, nothing right now.
Nope, alright, appreciate all of that, thank you, Charles. Um, we're gonna move on to our report from our Director of Student Services and we are fortunate to have Sarah with us this evening.
Alright, I can even overlap, thanks Sarah. So our report is slightly longer than normal, but I will make sure that I'm succinct, because I know we've been pretty media agenda tonight, but there has been some grant activity at the state level that positively impacts student services. I wanna make sure that I talk about those grants that we are receiving, that will um, really help us out. Um, so as far as overall special education enrollment, you see the numbers there. Um, we are always a bit lower in August, September in IEPs because we have graduating seniors, we have new kindergartners who are typically not identified. I will say though, um, you know, I've spoken many times about our identification rate being high and our disproportionality being high. When I assumed this role just over a year ago, we were around twenty-three percent um, IEP students. Where we sit today, again, the number will wax and wane, but we're at twenty. So a three percent change over a year is really quite significant. Um, so our teams have been doing an amazing job with the support of the administrative team of really being judicious about our eligibility process, about our exiting processes, um, about our tiered support for students before they get to special education referrals. So we're gonna keep working on that and you'll see it in my improvement plan as well, but that really is um, an awesome sign. So kudos to our teams who've been working on that. So you'll see that number go up and down, but where we were over a year ago in September, we are down significantly, about three percent at this point, so that is a good thing. Um, any questions on our enrollment numbers at this time? No, okay, um, so I mentioned grant activity, the first grant I wanna speak about was a competitive grant, so that means that you have to apply and only certain schools and projects are selected by the state. Um, we were awarded what's called the primary mental health grant, so it was a competitive grant only for students in grades K through two. Um, and it had a lot of kind of constraints around the grade, had to be um, play-based therapy and play-based um, self-regulation skills, which kind of makes sense because the state's moving in this play-based learning direction, so makes sense. Um, it had to have some specific staff included, it had to include um, the funding of a specific staff member to do this that was an additional staff member, not um, a, a supplant kind of, you know, supplement, not supplant type of um, dichotomy in that grant, but we were awarded more than we asked for, which was really exciting. I have to give a huge, huge shout out to Alyssa Law, our new occupational therapist. She was writing this with me in June when everyone else was on a summer vacation, you know, rushing to fill the grant. She did, you know, the lion's share of the work on this and it really is her vision, so we were awarded more than we asked for, which is exciting. And what we will be doing is building with the support of Ryan and Krista Prince Salvatore, who will be just instrumental in this process. We're gonna build um, a sensory self-regulation space at Valley View. Um, so all this talk of new construction is exciting, but we're gonna do some already because we were given some grant money. So um, you know, it'll be used for not just special education students, but general education students, it'll be kind of a self-regulation space for them with some sensory play, some fine and gross motor play, we're gonna have like a climbing wall, swings, things like that. Bob gave us the okay that the swing and some of the attachments, we worried about gildersleeve when we initially talked about targeting second grade, that ceiling wouldn't support it, but Valley View is uh, good to go with that, so we're gonna start building that this week, we're meeting to do some final revisions on the grant. But it will involve, which I'll come back to you at a later meeting, um, the funding of an additional para educator to work solely in that room and with those students through that process, so that's exciting.
So, could you give to the non-contingent access to the room and what caused you and Alyssa to include that?
So it's a, it's a part of the grant, so the grant had language in it that it can't, the, the project itself or access to the services cannot be contingent. So you couldn't say, you know, Kim, you're having a bad day today, you're not allowed to go to the owlets nest, it, it can't have that contingent access. So students have to be able to access it freely, it can't be an earned reward, if that makes sense.
I'm just wondering where that's coming from and why they included that.
I mean, there's different opinions in behaviorist mental health community around like earning access to things versus things being a regulation tool. I think what they didn't want, projects like if you're good, you earn cookies, like that type of contingency versus we're gonna, you know, proactively regulate you and give you this to help you not get to that point of escalation versus rewarding you for not doing it. I assume that's kind of the, the thought behind it, but it absolutely makes sense, you know, you have to deal with the problem and give kids proactive skills, not just reward or punish afterwards, so I think that was the, the thought process behind it.
Exactly.
Yeah, so it's really, really exciting, we're, we're elated, uh, we're gonna start really planning that out this week, but it's gonna be the owl's nest, because they're baby owls at Valley View, we're bringing owls and then Alyssa. We're getting owls and then Alyssa said, you know, but they're, they're owlets, they're little babies, so um, it's going to be cute, she made the cute little graphic um, that we'll have there. So any questions about that grant? Um, more grant activity on the second page, so as Charles mentioned, there was a lot of legislative activity over the spring and summer. Um, you might recall him sharing, we did this massive task force studying special education and how they can improve it. Surprise, surprise, the biggest finding was we need more money and it's very expensive to do special education well. I'm sure they could have asked almost anyone in this room and we would have the same finding. Um, but what they did create was something called the seed grant, so special education um, expansion development grant. We didn't get a ton of notice that this was happening. Um, when I went to my legislative update with Shipman, they didn't know this was coming down the pike and how they were going to fund it. But basically it's an entitlement grant, so they, just like our IDEA, they took our enrollment, they took our demographics, all that information. An algorithm spits out a number and the number that we got is just over seventy-three thousand dollars. Um, the state has not yet provided guidance, we've reached out and we're waiting on exactly how it can be spent. If I had to guess, it would be a supplement, not supplant type of grant, so we can't fund our existing staff through it. I assume we will have to add new staff. There was a line in it though that we cannot um, do contracted services, so things like transportation, like our PTs, are one of our SLPs, they could not be used um, with this grant. But it is essentially, you know, free money that we know we're getting, so that's really exciting. And the first payment um, is arriving, I believe, October one and it's funded in three payments, so that will really be exciting. Um, we suspect that we will use a lot of that to fund para educator needs that are kind of arising in the district. We do this every year, you know, we, we don't know who we're getting and we don't know how needs will arise, so I think that will be a piece of the grant. Um, any questions on seed grants?
Right, the understanding with the seed grant that it's an annual entitlement grant or is this just a, a, a short-term commitment from the state?
I think the vision is an annual recurring grant. Um, but there's been really not a lot of communication and guidance around it. And I reached out to the state last week, they said, you know, TBD, we'll let you know. Um, that what I'm reporting is what I guess it to be, they did in the grant language specifically say though, not contracted service, so that piece I know. Um, but yeah, I mean, I think if they want to realize the vision that was in that study that they conducted, um, it absolutely will need to be something recurring, um, because you know, the needs continue. There's very little in special education that you can fund for one year, but we are being mindful about not creating too much of a cliff because we kind of experienced that with us or funding. Um, so if this is not going to be an annual grant, we just need to be mindful about how we're using it so that we don't create cliffs that then the LEAs to absorb or then we lose services and, you know, kids don't get what they need, so we're talking about it. Any other questions? All right, um, quick little rebranding update, so as you might recall at Valley View, um, our, you know, specialized program there was referred to as the ABA lab, it was a vision of the previous principal there and it really was for solely students with autism. The program has really expanded to be all students that have high support needs. Um, so we decided to rebrand it as our rise program to kind of match with Gilder Sleeve Brownstone. Um, it just better describes what we're doing and we've had, you know, the pleasure of having Matt Campbell, who was a previous special educator and then kindergarten teacher in Portland, um, take on the program. She had talked about it for years and then finally she kind of jumped in and was um, ready to do that, so. It's going to really build that pathway, as you can see on that graphic of rise being a continuum of K through um, four and then having or K through six rather, once we have a brownstone program, you know, depending on how that goes with consolidation, but then to life skills and transition, so that is a rebrand, but it's, you know, one, to make it consistent and two, really describe what we're doing there, which is not solely autism-focused support. All right, um, as far as hiring, we hired a new para educator in our bridge program, he was an ESS sub for us. We've been getting a lot of great para hires that way, which is exciting. Um, unfortunately, we do have an open position for our rise program at Gilder Sleeve, that was a, a later resignation, unfortunately. Tracy and I have been interviewing really aggressively, but we're being really mindful about finding someone who is the right fit, not just someone who's available. So we haven't found that candidate yet, but the three other special ed teachers there have been covering those needs to keep us in compliance, which we're very appreciative of, but um, there's been, you know, in the rise program and our life skills program over the years, a lot of turnover and we're mindful about finding the right person who wants to lead it and be a part of Portland Public Schools, not have turnover every year. So though we interviewed candidates, none were really the fit that we were looking for, so we're still um, working on that. We also have an open position for a para educator in our bridge program. Um, Joe was interviewing candidates this week and we'll probably have an offer to one in the next few days, so that should be buttoned up. And of course backup van driver, I'm always asking if anyone would like to drive, it's very easy, you can do your van endorsement online. Dave, I know you're ready, one day. Any questions on hiring?
Nope.
Um. All right, transportation, our third minivan is out hitting the streets. Um, it is mostly doing outplacement transportation as a cost savings mechanism. We currently have four drivers, still looking for backups, but um, service has been excellent, we've not had issues, so shout out to Olivia on that one, she's doing a great job.
That's great, all right, any questions in the report?
I just have one quick question because I know we talked about the transition program, looking for a specific location outside of the schools that buildings that we have, is that still somewhere in the back of your planning to find a location?
I would love to find the right location, um, and that was because of the law change. So now the law is that transition programs can only be housed in high schools or community locations. So as you might recall, it was initially a brownstone, now we're kind of doing a split. I think we would need the right location, something walkable on Main Street would be amazing, so kids can get to their job sites. Um, I think it's just a question of the right location, the right, right outfitting and.
Is there a square footage requirement for the number of students that are in that program and, you know, as we build?
Honestly, not sure.
You're not sure.
Not sure, yeah, so it's something that we'll continue to look at as we go into budget season, it's my intention to put that forward. Um, but it would really be, you know, in our small town, really dependent on.
And so just before Dawn, just before Dawn was retiring, we were looking and I had actually talked to several people who owned buildings, so I can follow up with you and see, you know, give you the information that I got at the time.
Yeah.
Because somebody just approached me again and said, who asked me about, you know, such and such, and I'm like, yeah, and then, you know, we had a change of personnel.
Yeah, and we also, as you might recall, last year, we kind of had the vision of a bookstore or a coffee shop and partnering with the Nest program. The Nest coffee shop unfortunately is no longer um, in operation, which is really sad, we were excited about that partnership. So um, Ted and I are meeting tomorrow actually, but we need to kind of think, what is the vision? Is it still going to be kind of a business that is doing coffee or books or something that stands up in the community or is it more of a life skill space? Some programs will have more like an apartment setup where you're doing that kind of work versus a storefront and you're creating a product and selling to the community. So we'll have to, to look at that, that was a real sad thing that happened, yeah.
Understand, all right, yep. I'll be in touch, I'll be the name.
Yeah, please do, all right, thank you, so much, any updates, Sarah?
All right, we're going to move on to new business and the first item here is a meaty one. These are, are, um, no pun intended, because it's the taco plan. I didn't mean to do that. We're going to, we're going to look at four of them tonight, um, so Charles, do you want to tee this up or do you want to just dive right in?
Do you want to introduce, just in terms of the process, remind everybody what the taco acronym is and, and how we've gone about that? Some leadership board retreats, all of us to think about.
Absolutely, um, our, our, I'll say, our school improvement framework that we utilize, which does use the acronyms of T A C O. Is a, we started using this two years ago, um, in place of what previously were board goals that were made along with objectives. Now we give a comprehensive look over the course of the year, using a continuous improvement model that the state had put out and we had adopted. That includes T for talent, um, so our district goal related talent is that we recruit, develop and retain high-quality diverse staff, uh, leaders, educators and support personnel across Portland. So unchanged from last year, these are long one to three-year aspirational goals. The next one, our academic goal is that we will advance achievement for each and every Portland public student while reducing gaps in achievement between subgroups. Our goal for C, which is our culture and climate, is we will nurture and sustain Portland Public Schools as an inclusive community in which all individuals seem, see, feel seen, heard and valued. And our operations um, vision is that we will ensure that Portland Public School provides the resources, time and facilities necessary to support student and achievements. So over the course of the next two board meetings, you're going to see our building principals as well as Sarah and myself talking about our departments. Um, it depends what the, the different goals, objectives and action steps will be to try and achieve those four large-scale goals for the district. These are, they get more specific, the further they go, you'll be able to see individuals responsible and the type of theme that we'll be looking at to kind of see success for them. You should hear tonight with our elementary schools, very common themes in each of those areas, whether we're talking play-based learning or, or reading and, and NTSs structures that we talked about earlier this year. With this, we want to make sure that we keep in mind that these goals again are aspirational in nature. Our effort is to always be looking forward to achieve these things. There are a number of goals that you could, and objectives you could put along to reach these ends, but we want to maintain some focus around what we do within these, so our goal is always to remain as brief as possible with such an expansive thing as its school improvements.
Yeah.
Any questions about the overall framework before I turn it over to our principal?
Can I ask you a question, I mean, this is kind of for both of you, um, and Chuck, because I know this is your first time in this role, but, but you've been doing this as a principal the last couple of years, this is our third year, is that right?
Third year.
It's our third year using this framework and I'm curious from your perspective, um, you know, what has that? How, how are you, how, how is everyone viewing this process now? Is it been all, overall a positive move away from the like, you know, big five bullet point list that we used to put together and getting, getting these goals kind of more targeted under each of our, of our schools and departments? What's that experience been like, are we heading in the right direction with this particular process?
So I'll finish the last one, are we heading in the right direction? When I came to Portland, I, I was surprised that we didn't have a process in place because most districts do have each school has their own school improvement plan that falls under the relevant district. So this really did get us in line with what best practices for schools to develop a school improvement process that hits multiple domains and goes from that overarching objective all the way down to the state goal was in Bay of Hill. It's also been a very um, useful tool in terms of its functionality. This, this framework is what helped us guide our summer leadership retreat. So as opposed to in the past where we would kind of think about what board goals, we, we are meeting as a summer leadership or team over the summer, developing something that we think will be in line with what the board goals will be based off of what last year's board goals are. This now allows us to really hit the ground running and develop an improvement process that's continuous, that's long-term and that's coherent. So ultimately this does allow us, and as you saw in the teaching and learning report uh, from last, from two weeks ago. It allows us to look at those areas and for each of those domains to kind of drive improvement efforts. And again, to really build some coherence across the district between the operations that we have and the, and particularly academics. And this year you'll see that theme consistently with the school climate law changes that happen. You'll see almost all of these plans reference that as we work to stay coherent around these changes that are coming to us.
Great, thank you.
All right, with that, our first um, school improvement, school improvement plan, I try to avoid saying taco. Our first school improvement plan will focus on that, we'll start going up in grade levels, so we're going to start with Valley View and we'll go up from there.
Excellent.
All right, I'll try to keep this brief, um, and it certainly, you know, you, I know you have had the opportunity to take a look at um, the Valley View plan. Um, and so if you have any questions at, at the end, you could certainly ask. Uh, it, it actually, when you look at, uh, for those of you who remember um, just generally Valley View's plan from last year, uh, this plan really builds on the work that uh, we started last year, obviously it was my first year at Valley View last year. Um, we had um, several new teachers last year. Um, and I'm proud to report that we have one new staff member at Valley View this year. So, you know, starting a school year with one new staff member versus, I think we had eight last year, is a, a very, you know, you start in a very different place, put it that way. Um, our fire drill, well, the first one was absolutely amazing because everyone knew exactly what our procedures were and what to do and so forth. Um, so I'll just go down through this briefly, um, the, under the uh, the talent goal, um, the two goals, the first goal uh, focuses on developing first and second year teachers at Valley View. Um, and really it should just, it should be developing uh, second year teachers because um, many of our teachers that we hired who were new teachers, about half of them, this is their second year, made very successful, um, you know, first years uh, in their teaching career and, and at Valley View, but it's just, you know, continuing that process and hopefully continuing that process in a way that we retain them, um, they're fantastic. Um, and the second is continuing the professional learning community work um, at Valley View. A lot of this work is similar to the work that Tracy and I did at Gilder Sleeve um, several years ago. You know, this year, um, we're really focusing on, uh, we, we did a lot of work the last couple of years with uh, the, the curriculum and uh, as you all know, we had a new reading program last year. Uh, so still continuing that, you'll see that in the second part of my plan as well. Uh, but this year focusing on um, more short-term, um, short assessments every week, every two weeks um, and going through a process um, as a team with evaluating those assessments. And uh, most importantly, figuring out ways uh, to use all the degree level teachers and resources we have to reteach um, those standards that students haven't mastered. Um, so, so we're working on that um, in our, our professional learning community and our professional learning teams. Uh, the, the, under academics, our first school is refining the implementation of the new reading program. This is a year two with the program, uh, but uh, it actually, there is a new version of it that just came out, which we have adopted. So it's slightly different um, than it was last year, so it's looking at those changes. And so far it seems like they're, they're good changes that the company has made. Um, and we're uh, piloting the writing component of it this year. The writing component of it in the previous version really wasn't very strong. Um, but this new version of it seems to uh, be a lot stronger, more closely aligned, uh, aligned with the, the common core standards. Uh, so we, um, teachers are implementing that for the first time this year. The second is uh, implementing the play-based learning uh, in alignment with uh, the Connecticut uh, play-based learning legislation. Again, this is not new for Valley View, uh, Jessica Bruin started this work um, several years ago with the staff. Um, the, you know, especially the kindergarten team, but really pre-K, K and one um, have embraced it and um, it, that just keeps getting stronger and stronger. What I love about it is we have a play-based learning block, um, it, it tends to fall in the afternoon uh, for kindergarten and first grade. But they're just so talented at embedding it throughout math and um, literacy, science, social life throughout the day. It just, it's, it's naturally what primary teachers do, um, so I just, that, that's just getting better and better. Um, culture and climate, um, the first is aligning the Valley View Climate Committee practices with the new climate committee legislation. Um, that's something that, you know, uh, all schools and, and, and every principal on the, you know, the, the Portland Leadership Team is working on this year. We had some training this summer, uh, we've appointed Krista Salvatore, our um, Valley View Social Worker as our committee chair um, for, for climate, um, and we actually have our first meeting on Thursday, so um, beginning that work, uh, maintaining low chronic absenteeism, uh, we were at five percent last year at Valley View. I always say I really can't take full credit for that at this age level, it really is primarily, you know, on parents. Um, you know, but we do have, you know, some families that we have conversations and, and more importantly, we support um, if, if attendance becomes an issue. Um, and then lastly, um, operations first is streamlining the, the budget process um, at Valley View. And I just realized that we need to do that a little bit more, having gone through it with the team leaders at Valley View for the first time um, last year. So, you know, a lot of that is just, just procedural with the staff. And then lastly, uh, is reducing the screen time in the K-one classrooms, which dovetails with uh, the play-based learning initiative. Uh, so, you know, we've taken, uh, we've taken steps, you know, at this point, we are not one-to-one at Valley View any longer. Um, our kindergarteners do, our, our kindergarteners are adamant about having very little um, screen time with our kindergarteners, which I fully support. Um, we have Chromebook carts for our first graders um, that are accessible at this point. Uh, so it's just figuring out how that works, transitioning still out of the one-to-one, um, you know, system that we were in post-pandemic and figuring out what that looks like for us. Questions, go ahead.
I'm just following on what you were just saying.
Yep.
When we were in our Board of Ed retreat in the summer, one of our goals was to support the elimination of screen use in pre-K through grade two. And I just wanted to see if like, there's a way to maybe close the gap there because what I'm hearing is that students in grade one are still having that access, and I know it's a transition, but for example, if a student finishes their work, does a Chromebook substitute for like fill-in time where they're doing something after they're done?
I, I can say with confidence that it doesn't, the way uh, they are primarily used, uh, so at this point we only have two carts. So um, it's not possible for all first graders to be on a, a, a Chromebook or any type of screen um, at the same time, um, anyway. They, they're uh, used in what, when the teachers do literacy and math rotations as one of the rotations, which are typically. As one of the rotations, which are typically, I'll say ten to to twenty minutes, depending on the time of year um and what the rotation is. Um, and they're um, you know, again, either tied to what they're learning in in that math unit or in that literacy unit. Um, specifically, so uh they're not used at recess, you know, they're not, you know, um. What they're not used as a, there really aren't many opportunities where it's, you know, you finish your work and you get to. Pick something, you know, else to do in kindergarten or first grade, like they don't, you know, uh. One, our classrooms don't really run that way, but also, you know, they don't always have the stamina to be able to do that. Um, so again, typically there are only four or five of them in the classroom and they're they're one of those rotations. And in most cases, the students don't get to each of those rotations every day.
And do we feel like we need to be using Chromebooks in those rotations?
I I I do think it's it's meaningful practice um in that it it, you know, they are programs that have embedded their programs that are. Um, you know, aligned to the the standards um that are, you know, are taught in that unit, you know, and I having been at Gildersleeve and just kind of thinking. Um, you know, from third grade and working back on this, in third grade, they have to take smarter balanced, which is, you know. Whether, you know, we like it or not, it's on the computers and it's complex, you know, so I would say as we work down, you know, second grade. Uh, you know, has to have some type of opportunity to prepare for that. Like, we can't put all that on the third grade teachers. Um, so I think that limited time in first grade, uh, you know, and again, making sure that it's focused. Is, you know, just start of like dipping their toe in the water for those experiences. You know, for example, some of the math programs that they um that they use as early as first grade. Um, you know, they have to learn how to put their answer in, you know, on the computer and manipulate certain things and. And a lot, I I can still remember even fourth grade teachers, um, you know, being a little bit frustrated when they get to smarter balanced. Because um those, it's not that they can't do the math, it's having the skill set they need to be able to put their answer as. The way it's it's designed by the state.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Good question. Are there other questions for Ryan?
No, I think this is reflects what um we talked about and the goals. Play-based learning is so important. Getting the kids out and getting them outside of all of the uh. All of that, learning how to get along cooperative games. So I think this is a good plan and reflects building. On last year's success.
There are a lot, lot of through lines for sure.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Ryan.
All right, good evening. I'm next. And speaking of the through lines, I was thinking that a lot of the things that Ryan said, it is nice. I think you'll see that coming through. From Valley View to Gildersleeve and to Brownstone, there's certain things um which will kind of grow and overlap a bit, which is great. So for talent, um again, we are pretty lucky this year. We have um a new fourth grade teacher, a new art teacher, a new reading specialist. And we're hoping quickly to hire a um a teacher for our RISE program. But again, just like Ryan said, we have some awesome people. The teams around them are so wonderful, the teachers that are working beside them, mentoring them. Um, it it's it's just been great and they've been so happy so far. So we're um off to a great start with that and hoping to just. Um, continue to watch them grow as educators and keep them here. Um, as far as our academic goals, the two that I picked was at one was around the PLC model, which we started years back with Ryan at Gildersleeve. And we really spent a lot of time, there's four big questions that they they have you ask. And we've spent so much time on, you know, what are the standards? What are we teaching? How do we know if the kid's gotten it? What have we done if they haven't? Um, the fourth question though really has to do with extension and enrichment. And I think now it's really time Gildersleeve's really got to start focusing on that. And the teachers all agree, and so we've already had some discussions about what that's going to look like, but I think that'll be a really great. Focus point for teachers this year, because we do have a lot of kids who do understand the lesson and they do finish quickly. And kind of to Sarah's point too, we don't want them just on the computer doing something. So we've really been trying to kind of think more like project-based, um some things with like choice boards. So depending on what the kid. Uh, you know, what this child is into. If they're into music, maybe they're gonna write a song that will teach them something. Or, you know, if they're into art, maybe they're gonna produce something. We have a lot of kids really into STEAM right now and our fourth graders are taking part in a STEAM class. So um we're really looking at different ways to really infuse that into the day. So that's a big focus for this year. Um, on the other end of that, kind of, I guess, is with our little ones in second grade in particular, we're bringing in play-based learning as well. The legislation really does speak um all the way up to fifth grade. There's, there's, you know, there's room for that. So. We are um Chuck worked with one of our second grade teachers found a CEA, right Chuck? Um, program that will come out. So during some of our two-hour delays, we're gonna have some more um guidance on that. They're actually gonna bring us. Some things as well, we're hearing, right?
High school.
Yes, yeah. So our teachers are very excited about that. Um, right now they did what they're calling their soft launches in the morning instead of, in the past, I will admit, a lot of them were had them on computers. Um, those are all gone, not happening, and the kids have different bins out that they're playing with in the morning. And it really is so cute to just see them right off the bat, before I even come out for announcements, they're already engaging and building and playing and talking. So um we just hope to build on that. So uh that's academic. Next up, culture and climate. As Ryan said too, really very similar to what he said, we have. Um, a new climate specialist, that's Sam Starr in my building. We have our first meeting scheduled for the twenty-fourth. Um, and we'll begin to work on our school climate improvement plan. Uh, the last part of that is this summer, um Ryan and uh Kate and Mike and I went to a, the. The PD was called Alternatives to Suspension, um which sounded kind of so. It was like a little scary, but it really was all about kids building connections. Um, you know, what are ways that we can have kids really understand? Uh, the rules and what we want them to do. One thing we adopted at Gildersleeve this year was um, they all did respect agreements. With their classes, which was very cute. I can share this with you later, but. They had to talk about um how students should treat students, how students should treat teachers, how teachers should treat students, and then how everyone should. Um, treat the classroom. And the teachers were blown away with some of the ideas that they had and the kids all had to sign it. And I kept a copy in my office of all the ones, they have ones hanging up too. But when I have students come down to the office, you know, I pull out that sheet too and we kind of talk about, so where did this break down? You know, you signed this respect agreement, you helped to build it with your class. So it was little things like that that I took away from that summer um workshop that I've been sharing with the staff and everyone's really kind of excited about that too. Um, as far as increasing student engage engagement, um we're launching the Hive Council, which is like our Gildersleeve take on. Student Council, because we're the bees. And um we're starting it with just our fourth grade classes. I'm gonna have one. Class a month that's going to be taking part in Hive Council. They have to fill out a little application. Uh, we have our first meeting on Thursday and they'll help with things like our um monthly assemblies, we call them our town meetings. So they'll help to run those, they'll help me with morning announcements. Um, and they have a lot of, a lot of good ideas. Yeah, one of them was ten more minutes of recess every day. Can't do that, but um so I'm excited about that to give them some leadership opportunities. Um, as far as operations go, Ryan just said this too, but reduce screen time is a big one for us as well. So second grade, um you'll probably remember from last year, we took their computers from them randomly on like a Wednesday or Thursday, right Charles? One day last spring and um they were a little bit, you know, flabbergasted at first, but honestly, they have never looked back like. That was kind of the new thing. There's one cart for the entire grade. Um, so there are times of the day where they do use them, but there's no one-to-one devices for second grade. They're embracing the play-based. And we're really focusing on that um in all the grade levels. Um, you, some of them were very easy. We just said no more computers. If there's indoor recess, no more computers. At the end of the day, you know, there was easy things that we could clean up. And now we're looking to make sure they are using them during um the school day, that it's meaningful and not, you know. Just giving them something to do. So that's another big focus. And then um finally, um. We are gonna continue to look at the Gildersleeve grants. We're so lucky that we have the opportunity in town. And our staff in particular was so excited about that last year. Um, they helped to fund our Lego Robotics Club, which was able to get bigger this year. Um, Karen Razowitz, our library media specialist, was able to get us all new AV equipment. So when we have our monthly assemblies, we have microphones and speakers that actually work, which is nice. So um and teachers have a lot of great ideas, things that we wanted to bring in. As far as in-school um assemblies or people in residence, that type of thing. And um Chuck and I actually um talked a little bit to Andy about not having to wait until March. To, you know, get the funding to wait until the following school year. There's certain things that we'd love to jump on earlier. And um they're gonna look into that, I think, for us too. I think that was it. Any questions for me?
Just two questions.
Sure.
One is, um, because uh Ryan had mentioned the soft skills that kids need for smarter balance assessment.
Yeah.
Is the immediate person, um Karen or somebody doing some. Training with, you know, point and click and all of that kind of thing, so the kids are ready to be able to fill in the answers on those. Statistics.
Yes, yes, that is part of 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 her curriculum and that was a concern for her too. She wanted to make sure that she at least was able to expose. The kids to those skills and, you know, whether, uh, we don't want them on the computer for sure, but they are growing up in that day and age. I mean, they're gonna. They're going to need to have those skills. So we do feel like that is important. Our second graders just took um our aims web assessment, which is something that we give three times a year. And for the second graders, it's their first time doing on the computer. It's all individual with a teacher at Valley View. And just being in there to watch them have to log on, you know, they have this huge long code they have to put in. That was like a lesson in itself. I was, you know, one of the facets that was like, they haven't even taken the test yet. They're already exhausted. So I mean, there is, I think we are always trying to walk that fine line, um making sure they have the right skills, but. Certainly not overdoing it. We're all on board with that.
And then the other question is the maker spaces that were in the library um to extend that into classrooms during. You know, those indoor recess times, play-based learning and things, because kids just give them paper and glue and crayons.
Absolutely, yeah, yes. Karen does run an after-school club with that and this year, like I said, she's teaching a fourth grade STEAM class. So using some of that there, but that would be a great way to, yeah, another little enrichment thing, absolutely.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions?
I had a quick question. But uh, on value that he talked about absenteeism, and I don't see that mentioned.
Yes, I know. I, you know, I I went back and forth. It was on it the last couple of years. Um. I think really we have a pretty good system in place right now and our numbers were were, they were great the year before. They were good last year. Um, Sam Starr has been kind of working very hard on that. So we still do. I didn't feel like it had to be a goal as if it's something new. But we're just gonna maintain what we have been doing, which is just getting really the families on board. We had a lot of success last year with. Um, bringing in parents and just having a conversation with with just like with the social worker, the teacher. Um, and myself and the parents and, you know, we heard all kinds of things. Sometimes they said, I'm scared to send them if they're. Maybe sick because we don't have a car and we can't come and pick up, you know, if that happens. We only have one car and someone goes to work. So it was just being able to reassure them and some and and, you know, a another child said, um, you know, it really gives me a hard time getting out of bed. So we came up with, you know, a system. If you come to school five days a week, on Friday, you're gonna get to eat lunch with, you know, a teacher and a friend. And so just finding those little things. So we don't, we're not really tweaking anything different where I felt it had to be a goal. We're just continuing. What we have been doing, which has been successful.
Along those lines, we've been hearing a lot about absenteeism over the last couple of years. Can we start putting out some kind of reporting to us that tells us? Where we're, where we were, where we're going, or what the improvement is?
Yeah, so next, next week, right Chuck is presenting all of our. And so our next board meeting, um, present the um next generation accountability results, which.
That that that's not hard. The next generation.
Sorry.
The next school improvement, when I go through my school improvement process or.
You'll be talking about district-wide.
District-wide.
When are you doing the data presentation?
That one is not so generally, that was here in December, January of the next accountability report. Normally, next time is gonna be the. Uh, top of the school group, high school and future birth, all right? The second October uh board meeting is when I'll do the performance report over all of our state testing. That isn't yet when I.
That isn't.
That comes in the late winter.
Okay. Yeah, but to the, to your question, uh, this was reported in the press release that the state put out that Gildersleeve had like. Three percent chronic absenteeism rate last, not last year, but this year. And I think we spoke into this before that that's in large part. Credit to the work that Sam Starr has done in like literally knocking on doors in the whole school and providing families with the support that they need to get their students there. Have there been opportunities for Sam to share with the rest of the district about the work that he's been doing?
Yeah.
To try and implement some of that.
That's a, that's a great question. I know obviously Ryan knows because Sam, when he was there with Sam. And I know last year Sam went over to Brownstone and met with Mike and Cheryl McDonough um to kind of go through our process and and how we do it. But he, I mean, he has, it is, it is, he really has like a passion for it and he, every single day, he's down. And he's looking at the numbers and he's on, you know, already, he's already been to uh two houses actually and making sure that we have people here. So uh that would be great. I would be happy to to share him. I know he has done that with Brownstone, yeah.
It is, yeah, and really just just staying on top of it. Like I, we, you know, and Sam gave me this model and we even, and I brought to Valley View, which is. Um, you know, there are three of us, my my nurse, uh, social worker, myself, we meet at lunch once a month, sometimes more often if it's cooling up. But it's really just being on top of those numbers and 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 then period of adjusted, and you know, as they rise.
And I also think that the population at uh pre K one is, you know, their fingers are in their mouths. They don't wash their hands enough. And so illness is going to strike whether, so that could be account for the age. Uh, and the difference in, you know, the reporting for Gildersleeve as opposed to Valley View.
Right. And we always talk to our, you know, even probably all three of the elementary schools, our numbers are. Are probably gonna be for different reasons in the middle school, high school. Ours is really talking to the parents a lot, because I mean, that's who's in charge of getting what we're middle school, high school. It it could start to be the the child decision. So I realize it's kind of two different things that we're talking about, but it has been very successful for us.
Good to see.
So successful. And I think that it really. Again, in my mind, it really speaks to the, like, it's relationships, right? It's all, it's always about relationships. And kids come to school and families come, bring them to school when they know that it matters to to somebody that they are there.
Yeah.
Um, and so when Sam, Sam just demonstrates that really beautifully, I think.
Yes. And he always says that too, you know, he he will give the example, when it's field day or it's Fall Fest, like. We usually have great attendance on those days, you know, like we want them to always wanna be there and whatever that is to kind of hook them in, whether. You know, they know something special is going on or just that they're, yeah, loved and we're happy that we're here. And he is the first one out in the front of the building with me every morning, you know. High fiveing the kids as they come in. So I think it's like, we want them to feel that welcoming and and they show up most of the time.
Yeah.
To answer your question, I'll be including that when I do my monthly report, that'll be something I.
Okay, thanks.
I have one quick question. I love the PLC model question four about enrichment and I wondered if um language instruction was something that had ever been considered as well.
If I'm sorry.
If language instruction was something like.
Yeah, I know, I know, Ryan, you've always said that too. I mean, that would be, that would be amazing. That is not something that we have actually. You know, that that I have talked about, we were kind of trying to work this year at least with the, you know, the funds and the means that we have, but that that's an amazing.
I mean.
Love that happening.
Chromebooks may have.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Programs. Yeah, just some things like, yeah. Oh, absolutely. Yes, yeah. Yeah, we did do that a couple of times with win groups. Remember we had them, we did that at Brownstone too. Duolingo, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
I know, that's the thing, the blessing of the curse of the Chromebook, right?
It's true.
Any other questions for Tracy?
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Tracy.
Hi.
Hello, how are you?
Hello, welcome. Thanks for showing us your first continuous improvement plan.
What I liked about this process though is that I was able to look at what Mike had done last year and then build from that. So like, like Chuck was saying, like it just continues. So I was able to build on the things that he'd started already and and find some new initiatives that I wanted to focus on as well and our staff wanted to focus on. But um that part of the process is, I think, a really good part of it. So. Um, for our talent goal, um first is to continue to strengthen and support the second year of the teacher evaluation and support plan. I know the feedback from teachers, they really liked that was much more useful plan and and working within about individual teachers and. What they wanna do and what they wanna achieve. So I'm excited. Charles and I are gonna start that process on Friday, so he's gonna come around with me. We're gonna start doing some mini observations. So I'm looking forward to that. Uh, the the theme of the next two goals is communication, which is a huge piece to me, is maintaining people and retaining people is communicating well with them. So uh next is continue to strengthen and maintain support uh and rapport amongst Brownstone staff. So um all the, all the principles, when they first start, they do breakthrough training, which is. Really the idea of is it is me not to be camped out in the office, but to be out in the building. And I think it's made a difference already, like I, I don't wanna be stuck in the office and building relationships with the kids. I think it's made a difference already. Like I, I don't want to be stuck in the office and building relationships with the kids, focusing on teaching and learning. So I think it benefits a lot of different things. And the second part is just having those regular meetings between our different programs, our bridge program, our special educators. So I've already gotten compliments from my regular ed staff that they know about all the students in our bridge program and what works for them and different strategies to do, which is really great to see that. Closing that gap between just people in our building. Additionally, I'm trying to include Oak Hill on that. So we have Oak Hill leases out space to us. So really trying to kind of connect them and make them part of our school community. I actually have them presenting at our next staff meeting, just a little bit about their program and what they do. And that way, you know, those students are in our school as well. So that's something we're, we're doing as well. In addition, communicate with staff, various events, changes in schedule, meetings, et cetera, as an effective way. So a thing we're doing this year, again, it's not a, anything crazy, but a Google calendar where all the staff, paraprofessionals, specialists, they all have access to that same calendar. So, you know, as a specialist last year, sometimes I would, I wouldn't know what was going on. So that way everyone knows, hey, you can look at the calendar for the day. You know, if there's a special event going on, you know, if there's a change in schedule. So again, just that communication piece. In regards to academics, something we started last year was revamping our SRBI process in terms of in specifically that tier two instruction is we're using those classroom assessments and then we're we're focused on grade level standards, those priority standards and really nailing those and making sure kids are getting those. So well, you know, first units on geometry, right after our specialist, Stephen and Natasha are going to pull them and, and work closely with them on those specific standards. One that's near and dear to my heart, as a former math teacher and specialist, is just looking at that structure a little bit. You know, we have IM as our program, a lot of student of math as our program, which is more problem-based. And that doesn't work for every student. So a focus for us this year is to work on more of that small group explicit instruction. Again, it's not a one-size-fits-all thing. So what works, we use affirmative assessments and then really nail that with kids in that, that small group instruction. I know they did a lot of that at, at Gilder sleef. So we're kind of following that model. We're using IM as a guide, but we're going to go off that a little bit and, and more explicit teaching. Again, I, I think it's important too. I wanted to get our ELA teacher and social studies teachers input. So they're going to work to improve students' ability to write responses to text that are supported, detailed and elaborated. And again, I think that's a great one that can go across all the content areas. In regards to culture and climate, we're in the process of forming that climate committee. Stephen Jewell, our climate specialist, he and I just met the other day. So we have our first meeting on the books in two weeks. We're looking to find a few other stakeholders that we can add to that committee. Along with maybe designing some surveys to get that data. So we can start driving that towards our plan. Next, continue to strengthen and if needed revise our behavior intervention in ways that provide positive student growth and appropriate accountability. So that's something I've been leaning on Tracy and Ryan with and trying to kind of piggyback off of things that they're doing. So in regards to our school expectations, I've aligned that with their school expectations, which also finds the vision of their graduates. So we've been doing that and making sure we're really hammering those expectations with our students. And then I also stole from them. They do these town hall meetings, which is again, building that school community. And again, it goes along with our SEL lessons. So kind of connecting that. So right now our focus this month is kindness and respect. So just a through line on that is our most important thing for this first month. So I'm excited about the work we're doing with that. And then more opportunities for student, student involvement in voice. So Danielle Trace is going to be starting a student council. And so we're kind of building off that student leadership that we started last year. We had them present at the end of the school year last year. So I'm excited to kind of take that next step with the student council. And then later in the year, kind of bring down that student leadership to our fifth grade and start developing leaders in the fifth grade as well. For our operations goal, I, I put the attendance tracking as an operation because I want to look at the structure of that. So our school attendance committee is going to attend some professional development on tiered ways to work with attendance. So that's something I'm excited to do. Cheryl McDonough found that. So again, kind of get structures in place. Now we can file tier one, tier two, tier three, just like we do for reading, math, behavior. We're going to do the same with attendance. And then lastly, I'm, I'm huge on safety. So we are in the process. Chuck and Joe Brugandi came, we had a meeting, operations meeting just a couple of days ago and just typing up the safety, you know, again, I, I just want to make sure that the building is safe as possible, different protocols that are going on. So that's something that we'll be in the process of working on throughout the school year. So, and that is it. Any questions?
Questions for Joe? Um, two questions. Do you miss the classroom now that you learned?
I'm enjoying it. It's different, you know, but it, the days go by quick. I will tell you that though, like, oh my God. Like it's four o'clock already. So it's, it's moving. So I, I like it. I'm enjoying it.
And also when you do get your student council, just like we have student reps here that report on scoldings, maybe they could come once in a while and report on what's happening.
They absolutely, they will absolutely be here. I promise that. Yes, yes. We'll do a spotlight for them. Yes.
Good idea.
Yeah, for sure.
Any other questions? Thank you so much, Joe. All right. Sarah, you are last, but certainly not least.
All right. Hi, last up. So my plan has some, you know, common threats from last year to this year. There's also some newer areas based on some data that we received, but nothing in here will be a surprise. It's all kind of themes and initiatives that we talked about. So under talent, I think I shared last year, you know, special education continues to be a shortage area. And what we found is to attract and retain people, you have to treat them well, support them, give them the tools they need to be great. And I think we've done an excellent job of that. We hired very few para educators and we only had, you know, one certified staff resignation at the, at the final hour. So we're doing well there. One kind of thing I want to expand this year is increasing leveraging our in-district staff to provide professional development. We have so many talented educators, related service providers in this district and they have a lot of knowledge and they seek a lot of it on their own time because they're, they're talented and wonderful and they, they work at a high level. But we started last year, kind of doing like a choose your own adventure model where on delay days, we would offer to powers into certified staff. Hey, Alyssa Law is giving a PD about assistive tech. Julie McGovern's giving one about multilingual learners. Like, would you like to attend and expand your knowledge here? This year we're going to increase that even more. There's going to be multiple offerings on delay days that are specific to para educators. If you might recall, you know, prior to me, Dawn was doing a module model where we had online modules for Paris. We've just found that not to be effective. You know, if you've ever done like a bloodborne passage training, you're kind of just like so we really want in-person and we want our staff to do it because it's tailored to us and it elevates our amazing educators. Like Trish Doherty, who's been in Portland for such a long time. She had like a list this long of this is everything I want to do. And these are all the trainings I would offer. So people I reached out over the summer and just, hey, would you be interested in doing this? And the response was overwhelming. And some parents have reached out saying, hey, I heard you're doing this. Can you please teach me more about securely? I don't know how to use it. Or can you please teach me more about this? So we're going to push that and it's going to be less of a choose your adventure and more of a, you know, these folks are going here because you need to learn about AT. These folks are going here because you need to learn about SEL, you know, whatever it is. So that will, you know, elevate our certified staff and also just provide our non-certified staff development they really need and are, are asking for. And another one that is a thread from last year, you know, really we were operating in silos in previous years where even though we're tiny, we're so many little buildings that people didn't know. I'd say, oh, do you know Krista Salvatore? And they would say, no, I have no idea who that is. But there's only, you know, four people doing a job in a district. You should know each other and collaborate. So we started that last year. I think it was very high impact that staff are meeting each other, not only during school, but then they're exchanging numbers. And hey, I have this kid that's really tricky. Can you talk through this case with me? Well, they're creating connections. So we're going to continue that. We have our department meetings. We also have specialized program by weekly meetings. And on our professional development times, we're making sure that different buildings are, are co-mingling together. So for example, last year, everyone who teaches Wilson reading got together. Karen Stryker, who is an amazing Wilson practicum level certified teacher, gave them so many resources. It was very helpful. So supporting people from within and just continuing to connect them is the big talent goal. As far as academics, I don't need to go deeply into this. Our disproportionality identification rate are quite high. So we're going to keep hitting on those. And that has to do with our eligibility process, but also that tier intervention, supporting kids before they get to that point. Through that FDSS process and that's a big piece of Chuck's work, work this year as well. So that is my academic school. As far as culture and climate, our owlet's nest is on there because that's going to be a big push this year. We're excited about that, as I mentioned. And then Joe spoke a little about behavioral leadership team. So that was something we started. I believe my last year as a BCBA at Brownstone, where we were creating a school-wide kind of behavior referral, if you will, data tracker, and then meeting bi-weekly to analyze it and talk about, you know, is lunch in fifth grade really challenging? Are XYZ students in second grade having a tough week, you know, and looking at it and making plans proactively? So we've now brought that down to Valley View as well this year. And Portland Middle School, I'm sure Mike will speak about it when he presents, but they're using a program called Minga that is a similar paid program to the kind of free Google Sheets one that I created for us because we love the price tag of free. So we're, we're a fan of that. But using that data to really be proactive about student behavior, which obviously affects the culture and climate in our buildings. As far as operations, I don't know if you've been on our student services section of the website, but it's a bit old and kind of clunky. So one goal of mine is to change it over to a Google site and just have improved the functionality and the amount of information that's on there. We've started creating brochures for all of our specialized programs. So Bridge, RISE, Transition, Harbor. So that when you, you know, if you are a parent and someone says, have you thought about the Harper program? When you go, you click, there's an expansive brochure all about the staff. This is what we do, what services we offer. So we really want to expand that greatly. That's going to be a big job of mine this year. And then of course our vans made it on here because now there's three of them. They were all parked next to each other in the parking lot. And I took a picture for Olivia and I said, our babies are parked. Little children there. So managing them really is a full-time job. Olivia is phenomenal at this. Like she has this enormous whiteboard and had like seven different colored markers and was trying to figure out all the routes to fit everything and maximize savings. So the vans are a big piece of the job though. I just always want to remind folks of that. So that will definitely be a focus in my work as well, is just making sure that they're they're on time, they're safe, and they're continuing to generate the savings that we planned that they would. And as of now, they are. Any questions on my improvement plan?
Two questions.
Yep.
Fleet management. Are you guys still doing the oil changes and doing that kind of?
Yes. So Olivia is still doing those. She also had to go for inspection and she didn't know that the van would lift it up with her inside. So I got a panicked call from her and left. She was not aware that that was going to happen. So yeah, she is still shouldering the burden of that. We do also have though, a schedule for cleaning with the drivers. So we were initially kind of having drivers gas and clean as they were able to, but now we're putting it as a piece of their schedule. So we make sure that hours are equitable. So you know, such and such driver is gassing this day of the week at this time. Such and such drivers vacuuming, cleaning out the van at this time. So we have gassing, vacuuming, all that. We have the log books. So those are all now in the schedule.
So as you move forward with the three vans and maybe potentially four.
Don't say it, Meg.
No.
You're not saying it. No more vans.
That's for sure. But, but the question is fleet management. And I know that there are some outsourcing places that will do, you know, monitor oil changes, entire rotations and all that fun stuff so that Olivia could focus more on things that are important, like making sure they're on schedule.
Yeah, I, I think our next step for vans is looking at some of our GPS tracking. So we have the townwide radios that we use, but then one went down and one of our driver was stung by a bee. She texted right before she went on her run. So we were kind of worried that she was having bee reaction. We couldn't get the hold of her. So we're looking at GPS tracking, looking at upgrading cameras, things like that are kind of next on our list there.
So you're on top of it. And then just, it's great to update the website and do brochures. Are you planning or do you do like family groups coming together to just kind of roundtable talk, you know, copy the hour or whatever with, with parents who are in the special ed services area.
Yeah. So Dawn.
They learn from each other and using parent advocates in a way.
Yeah. So Dawn had that going prior. And then there was interest last year in formally having a SEPTO, which is a PTO for special education families. There was some interest in it, but then really no one that wanted to step forward and lead it. And really the vision of a SEPTO is it's not coming from the district. So what Dawn had was kind of a district focus. Like I am going to schedule this time and whoever can come, can come. I do think in a district this small is greatly dependent on who are the interested families. So the cohort at that time was much older students that were approaching transition age of graduation. So therefore, if you're like a pre-K parent, you might not really get much from that group. So it's something I'm looking into. I would love if it were more community, like grassroots, and I was supporting at the district level, but we might be at a point where it's going to continue to be district-led. But I do think
I think district was not, not a problem. If you find a couple of parents who want to be kind of advocates and can facilitate or you know, who have been in the system a while and could actually be informative and helpful to other, to new families.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. And I think, you know, everyone's bandwidth is limited, particularly if you're, you know, managing PTO and soccer and dance and all this. So we'll definitely look into it. And I think it's just important that it is to be inclusive to all families of all grade levels. And it kind of depends on your, your parent participation.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. Good report. Thank you.
And I'm hearing this is a lot for Olivia with managing the three vans. And I want to make sure being part of, part of our decision to add the third van came with some additional funding for a part-time, you know, additional part-time hours with, from an administrative assistant to support with that. Is that happening? Is that taking some figuring out? Because I, I mean, I know that that person is in a different building. But is that, is that providing the support that Olivia needs to be able to manage all of this?
I think we're at the beginning stages. A lot of it, because the purchase orders for student service are so different than high school purchasing orders because they're like open tuition and transportation POs and they're very student dependent. So Olivia and Kim met, I believe, last week and kind of we've made a roles and responsibilities chart of like, this is all that Olivia will do. This is all that Kim will do and they're, they're working together. So I would say right now we're still in the phase of figuring out how it works. I suspect that once we iron out all the kinks, it will be helpful to Olivia because yeah, the vans are really, they could be at least a half-time job in addition to all her other, other duties.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for Sarah? No. Good job. Thank you very much.
I can stay there.
Oh, yeah. Save your, I think that was all of them. Great. Uh, so that was a first read. We're going to wait and take action.
Yes.
Only
Yeah, we have more next. Yeah. From Chuck, you'll hear from Mike and Kate. And then after that, I'm hoping you're ready to take action to adopt all of these as the boards.
Great. We can do that.
All right. Then we'll move on to item B under new business, which is the addition of one para educator. And Sarah was kind enough to talk to the personnel committee about this need and the personnel committee recommended that the, that this cover for the board.
Sure. So just to orient everyone, as you know, we have different funding sources for our para educators. Some are LEA funded, meaning Portland pays for them. Some are funded through grants and some are Hartford funded. So if an open choice student requires para educator support, Hartford pays for that para educator. So as our open choice numbers go up and down, if a student leaves Portland Public Schools, they graduate, they go somewhere else, they go to tech school, that funding for that para also goes. So over the summer, we had a student who was an open choice student who had a one-to-one para professional who's attending a tech school. I'm really excited for him. It's a, it's a good move for him. So that happened where we technically wouldn't need that individual, but we also had three students move in from out of district, all with significant para educator needs. And I'll probably be back in the next few weeks with some other needs that have arisen. So we do need that individual. We were able to cover two of the students by internal kind of moves and maneuvering and some changes we had with our returning students and para needs, but we do need that staff member. So the recommendation would be to move that Hartford funded position to an LEA funded, because it is a Portland student who has the need. So we're hiring a new person. The person is already here. It's just a funding shift because it is going to go under our books instead of being refunded by Hartford at the end of the fiscal year. So happy to answer any questions about some of the student needs, obviously while being, you know, verbal compliant, but we as always have, you know, waxing, waning our population, but we have had some pretty significant student needs come in this summer and it's our obligation and our duty to support them.
And this would be the cost of a full-time para educator?
Yes, it would. Yeah, 1.0.
And, and Sarah talked a little bit about with, with the personnel committee about the funding mechanism and had identified, as you talked about earlier, the seed grant. Seed grant.
Yes.
That, that very likely can't be used to offset current costs, but as this would be a new expense, that this, that this could more than likely be funded.
Yeah. So if I would suspect the seed grant will almost certainly cover new expenses. And though the person is still here, the position is new in a sense. That student that that position was supporting is no longer here. This is a move-in. So I'm 99% positive that we can put that para through the seed grant. So we have $73,000. Power is about 26 and change. So that, you know, eats a portion of it, but certainly a good use. It is, you know, our, our legal and moral duty to support those IEPs when they move in. And I will be back shortly with some more needs that are, that are coming up. So stay tuned. But that seed grant is going to be essential.
Are there questions?
I'm happy to make a motion to the full board to move the funding from for a para educator from the open choice program to our LEA. from the open choice program to our LEA funding, potentially the seed grant.
Thanks, Meg. Is there a second? Seconded by Sarah. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Sarah. Okay, we have no old business on the agenda this evening, so we're going to move to our committee reports and tell you that we have a curriculum meeting on the agenda. I think it's the first Wednesday of October. So at our next meeting, we'll have a curriculum update for you. Policy.
Policy met tonight. We have several first reads coming up at our next, at our next board meeting in October. And our next policy meeting is October the 16th.
And you're going to want to set aside some time for, for reading these policies that are coming at you because it's, it's like seven first reads coming at you for our next meeting. There were, wasn't joking when he said that the legislation that went through in this past, most recent session is, has put a lot on our plates. So.
And they're good policies. They're needed and they're, they're, you know, going to, they're going to help us in terms of dealing with a lot of different things, library materials and bullying and other things. So, but they're all important policies and they're all lengthy. So.
Some of them are updates. Some of them are new. Some of them will be redlined. So just make sure you set aside some time to take a look at those.
Yep. So that's coming up. Personnel.
Personnel. We did meet last week. That's right, last week. And we have set negotiation dates for both our custodians and our paraeducator bargaining units as well. We, we have transportation negotiations tomorrow. Sarah and Dave, is there anything else?
I mean, Sarah came to our last meeting to talk about the paraeducator.
So there'll be plenty more updates, I'm sure, as we move through negotiations. Buildings and grounds?
No meeting on the books. Don't know if we need to update about the boilers, but yeah, we can, we can plan a meeting.
That's a good idea.
Yeah. The CREG Council meets tomorrow, first of the year. Dr. Florio, who is the executive director, is retiring in January and we are interviewing a potential replacement for him tomorrow. So we'll have some exciting news after that.
Um, Dave, where's Lekman?
The, two things really. There was a lot of discussion, nothing final obviously about the school and college education plan. So I encourage you to listen to the video, repeat it all. And then lastly, there, as of the first meeting in October, they're back at the library no more. At the, what do you call it?
Yeah, it was a good conversation. And shout out to John, who like really gave such a thorough overview of all the work that the committee did. That was a good conversation. Youth Services.
Is meeting, was meeting tonight at six o'clock. They were discussing the Halloween on Main, which is October the 24th. And then obviously there's a collaboration with Park and Rec for the 5K Come On Over Race and the tree lighting. So those are probably also on the agenda. And as usual, anybody in the community that wants to serve on the board, the Ju- Juvenile Review Board is welcome to get ahold of Courtney and, and be available to serve on that. And I would just, an update on her, she is, because it's no secret that she is battling cancer. She is in treatment and is feeling pretty confident right now that, that she's on the right medication and things across her fingers that this will at least keep her around for a long time. So.
Safe Schools and Inclusion Coalition, do you all have a date yet?
We don't have an update. Chuck, or maybe Chuck has an update.
It's, we are, there's a newsletter for Interstate, it's Wednesday. And there's going to be an invitation out by next week. We'll be having our first meeting in October. Do you know, I haven't topped yet, but we'll send that out by sometime.
Excellent. Will you include, will you continue including board members on the newsletter that you send out? I do enjoy reading those. Awesome. Thank you. I think that takes care of three reports. Audience of citizens, we have anyone who wishes to share their thoughts with the board? Nope. Right. What about member comments? I'm going to start all the way over here with Anna, our, our new student rep. Anything you want to share?
Just wanted to say I'm thankful for the opportunity to be here and thank you for having me. I'm glad you're here. Liam.
I've got a little bit to say here. So last year, 365 schools were nominated for the National Blue Ribbon, or sorry, earned the National Blue Ribbon. So I just wanted to put that out there because we've done it three times. Of the amount of schools in America, that's pretty impressive. And I also wanted to highlight only four got it for Connecticut this year. Next, the Owlets Nest. That's absolutely incredible. Great use of funding right there. And on to, on something a bit more interesting to me that we're able to open up student councils in both Gildersleeve and Brownstone. There we go. Absolutely incredible. I've been a part of student government here at the middle school, high school complex for the past six years now. And it's an absolutely incredible opportunity and it's definitely helped set me up. So to extend it down is absolutely incredible. And lastly, the opportunity Dr. Britton mentioned, as I made clear in my comment, great opportunity. And if we're able to strike while the iron's hot, I think we'll be in a great spot. Thank you.
Thanks, Liam.
I ditto what Liam said about the councils because I think that leadership, you know, just starting so young and early is, it's really great. So thank you.
Thank you all for presenting tonight. It's awesome to hear about Gildersleeve. Welcome to our new student rep and Liam back again. And yeah, great initiatives. I'm so grateful for the direction district, district is heading. So thank you all for your hard work and please pass that along to everybody in your buildings who hopefully thinks so.
Thanks, Kim.
Ditto, ditto, ditto. I agree. You know, our student councils, all of the above. Congratulations for the school improvement plans. These are really, it, it helps us to focus also as a board on what is going on in each school. And while there are very similar things like school climate and, and all of the mandated things that we are required to include in our curriculum. It also shows the individual plans and what's needed at each level. So I really appreciate it. Sarah, I appreciate your report as well. Very concise. And I'd like to see the numbers come down, quite frankly, with outplacements. But, and there, there's a policy coming, coming at us that will require more reporting to the state as we assess outplacement programming, which is going to be on us to make sure. And I know we're doing it. So it's not, it's not going to be a new thing, but it will just add another layer of reporting. CAE is having a convention in November. Anybody that can come should come. Board members, certainly professional development is always important. On the 29th of September, and this is a new webinar that just came out of a need to address some of the political climate that is happening right now with division in communities that people are really politicizing a lot of stuff. They're going to be talking about how board members can address this political climate in a way that is not negative, that we are now working together, talking to all sides to come together for the best of our students in our community. And that's going to take place on October 20, I'm sorry, September 29th with some legal experts and some people that are communication experts. And it's going to happen at 12 o'clock. It's available. It will be available on the website. And if we can show it, you know, a lot of people outside of the boards of Ed to look at it, I think it'd be an important conversation. I can't wait till November is over and things are moving forward. But that's, that's all I have to say about that.
Thanks, Meg. I'll jump over here. Karen.
Um, yeah. Hi, thanks for having me. I'll actually ditto everything because, you know, like you said, thanks for having me. It's a great opportunity, right? I, I am scheduled to do my CAE training or ACAE training next Wednesday. So that's, that's step number one, right? So, and I do understand there's, there's separate training, correct?
So Karen, Patricia will be in touch with you. The schedule, you're going to meet with me and Chuck and Sarah and I'm taking on two other buildings. So we do our own in-house.
Yeah. Very cool. And it was really exciting to hear all the changes from, from the schools that my kids went to. It's like, wow, I wish that was around when my kids were there. So a lot of good, exciting changes, which is really positive. I, I'm glad to hear all of it happening. So, thank you.
So that's what I said. Welcome Karen into the board event. And I was able to, one of our board goals for this year is around community relations. And one of our action steps was to attend PTO meetings. So I was able to make it over to the joint Brownstone-Gildersleeve PTO meeting that was right before this. So kudos to Tracy and Joe, who were also there. And I just was there to share that the board event is here to receive feedback and questions, particularly around elementary school consolidation. We want to hear from the community. So I'll just reiterate that for anybody who's listening or watching this later. They also shared a wonderful idea to commemorate the Gildersleeve Blue Ribbon Award with a tree in the courtyard of Gildersleeve. To replace the tree that used to be there. So I loved that idea. And specifically hearing from those, from those at the meeting and in case anybody here is listening and could be able to participate, they're looking for parent support at the events that they're doing, that they're putting on as a PTO. And then also they'll be doing a calendar fundraiser. So filling each block of a calendar with some kind of a giveaway. So if you happen to have a business or know of a business that might want to donate things, then it could also be experiences, like riding on a fire truck or something. Please reach out to any of the Brownstone or Gildersleeve administrators who can direct you in the right direction. So I think that's it.
That's great. Thank you, Sarah. Thank you so much for attending the PTO meeting and being able to report back to us. Appreciate that.
Everything's pretty much been said, but I do say congratulations to the Gildersleeve team. I mean, that's a very impressive and similar to what you were saying. I was wondering like, are we going to have some kind of a sign-off front? Like you do in the Browns.
We, you know, that's, one of the bummers is that when, when you go to Washington, they give you a really cool flag. I don't know. I hope the state gives us a flag. We're going next week. We're going to have to get, yeah, we're going to have to.
Be something that comes out.
Take a shop class, create a sign.
Great project for some of our high schoolers.
Project. Yes. We have, we have work to do on that.
Something really beautiful. That's a great idea. That's great. Um, yes, ditto, ditto, all of the wonderful things. I mean, this is, I, you know, we often have meetings like this where I leave and I'm reflecting on what, what we have talked about and gone through. But it's like particularly apparent when we're got things to celebrate and when we're going through all of these goals for the year, that it's just becomes so apparent to me and to the board and hopefully to our community too, how much incredible work happens in our district every day. And we are so fortunate to have the leadership team in place that we have and our, our teachers and our staff are just incredibly committed to, to the success of all of our kids. And it's, it's so evident in the meeting like tonight's. So I'm very, very grateful. Thanks, Dawn. So yeah, just, you know.
Thank you.
And very briefly for board members, reminder that tomorrow, there is a school finance update webinar online at noon through CAE. If, if you're, you know, we're going to be probably still in negotiations. So I've, I know I've registered for the webinar and I intend to then watch the link for it later. So you, it's free. You can register and then watch it at another time if you can't attend. There's a legal issues, professional development opportunity in October. That's coming up October 16th. It is, I think it's like a Wednesday or Thursday morning, which I know is hard for folks who are working. And that one is in person, but it looked like there were some good topics on the agenda that day. So if you are interested and have availability, that might be one worth looking into. Meg already mentioned the convention. So there's some good professional development opportunities coming up for all of us.
And then the other thing that we should mention is that every year, in the last two years, we have applied for CAE's Leadership Award and we've got a plaque and we want to fill up all those spaces. So we're, there's a deadline of October the 3rd and we're hoping to submit another annual update. It basically is based on the performance of our board and what we do and how we manage our policies and all the many different that we all wear, explore.
How we work together collaboratively, how we.
It's like the board goals and also educational goals. So it's kind of exciting.
Yeah. So we will work on following that together for the next meeting. We do not have an executive session for this evening. So if there is no other business, then I would take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Meg, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Sarah. All in favor? We are adjourned.